The mayor and the council.
I like that comparison. It's a jump ball. So that means it's, the ball is in your court council. If one of you wants to make a motion, we have a second. We have a majority vote, then we'll move it. And if we don't make a motion, don't have a majority vote, we'll leave it in work.
Well, I'll make a motion to move item number fifteen of the work meeting to action.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Should I vote?
No.
No.
Alright.
So there's a tie, mayor.
I'm fine moving it to action. Um, and the only reason being is if the last two similar cases, the normal procedure was that they were put directly into action. Then I feel like that's what we've been doing and that that would be protocol. So motion carries to move that item into action. Alright, any other conflicts or personal interests on any of the agenda items?
No, mayor.
No, mayor.
Nope.
No, mayor.
Alright.
I have one other, um, item relating to the agenda while we're amending it or not. And it's not something that needs to be amended. I just, I've been waiting for the signed, um, annexation agreement for Haz- Hazlem Anderson. Was assured that I would be getting that, um, before tonight's meeting, which is why we put it on. And, um, I still don't have that and I'm asking and, and he says that he, they will not have that tonight. Um, he, and he can jump on at that time and discuss it via Zoom, or we can table it till next week. Um, it's, it's up to you guys. I just, I figure while we're amending the agenda, if you wanted to strike that one, we could. If you wanted to talk about it, we can. Doesn't matter.
So your options are he can be on Zoom if we'd prefer him to be on there?
But he's just gonna tell you what I just told you.
Right. And so it's your call if you'd like to wait on that one or?
We can, I mean, we're gonna have to table it one way or the other, cause we, we can't take action until that's signed. The question is, do we just table it as we're amending the agenda right now? Or should I have him wait and pop him on Zoom when we're ready for that? Actually, we don't have the owl up here yet, right now anyways, so.
Well, then I move to make a motion to table action item number nine on the agenda.
I'll segment that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay. So the time is now yours for a public comment. We have a few people here, I think, who've come to make a public comment. And you have a two-minute limit. Councilmember Topham is our timer. And you just need to state your name and whatever you'd like to say, like, like the council to know.
Hello, council members and the mayor. I'm Julie White, longtime resident. As you know, my life changed about nine months ago. And I've been dealing with a lot of acreage and things that we have here. And one of those that I've seen, um, is I've, there's a road, I think, that goes across one of my properties, um, on six hundred north. It will go across. And, um, I have a concern about it. I don't, I'm not really educated about it. I don't know why it's there, what it needs to be there for. Um, apparently that's, um, gonna happen, you know, in the future with this road, so that's where I'm at. I'm just very ignorant to all of it right now, but I, I'm concerned and I wanna get some answers and put it on record that it's something I, I'm, at this point, I protest or don't wanna have it there, cause I don't see any reason to. So, and it's, uh, I think you all know where it's at, possibly. Um, out by Matt Kemp's and Kip Smith's and that, um, proposed plan that goes out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Anyone else? Alright, moving on then from public comment. Um, we have a presentation and that is to introduce Krista Nelson. She is our Parwin City new public defender. And I don't know if you wanted to just come up and introduce yourself, or if, Dan, you had someone that was going to introduce her. I don't think.
No, she's gonna introduce herself.
Okay.
We were gonna do the whole write-up and have balloons and, and all that, but we decided to just let you speak for yourself.
You didn't have enough material for a write-up. Um, my name's Krista Nelson. Um, I practice primarily in Cedar City, but the opportunity presented itself here. And I appreciate that opportunity. Um, Mr. Jessen and Mr. Burns and Keith Naylor from the court have been really helpful in getting me up and running. So I've really just been doing this, I guess, for a couple of weeks, but, um, hope would be that I would continue for foreseeable future, I guess.
So we did already approve it last week, but, um, Krista wasn't able to make it. And I have never met Krista till tonight. We've talked on the phone and, um, and I just asked if she could come, so you guys would know her. Hopefully, nobody in this room ever needs Krista's services, but, um, and, and you've been working with the county. You've been working in this role for a little bit of time.
I have a private practice in Cedar, but I also do public defense in Cedar, uh, mostly in juvenile court, some justice court.
She's the best defense attorney in the county.
That's true.
And so I'm not that happy that y'all picked her, but I'll deal with it, I guess, so. Good job, Dan.
I, I think we'll be able to get along just great. But, and does anyone have any questions for me, or?
Just welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Welcome to Parwin City and thanks for coming tonight.
Yes, thank you.
We know you when we see you.
Yes, yes, and nice to put a face to the voice and the name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista.
Alright, moving now to our consent meeting. This is approval of the meeting minutes from June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Item six is approval of warrant registered for July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and the financial statement for June twenty twenty-fourth. These are items that are generally administrative in nature and are approved by one motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent meeting, items five through seven.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, consent meeting agenda items, pass and move forward. So our next is our action meeting and this is, I wondered if either of them were going to be here. I think most of the community knows these two people. But we have two new library board members that will be coming to work with that board. And they are Tammy Miller and Shelley Roy. Um, both of these members will be fantastic additions to the library board, so with the council's approval, um, they will become part of that board.
Mayor, I move to reckon, or approve the recommendation for Tammy Miller and Shelley Roy to be on the library board.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you. Skipping over item number nine, which was tabled, item number ten. This is discussing and awarding the pickleball court bid and also discussing our budget and a potential amendment.
Okay, so this item is, um, we're excited to be to this point in the process, but we do have, we do have an issue. So we, uh, we, we put this out to bid. Um, the city's been doing a lot of work to, um, to prep the site, all of our sweat equity in, in doing this. We've been, we've been getting it ready. Got to the point where we put out the bid. We split the bid into two aspects. Um, a concrete bid for doing the post-tension concrete and the, the, um, concrete that goes outside of the post-tension concrete, the skirt, if you will. And, um, and all of the pickleball specific court-related things, from the surface that gets sprayed on, the acrylic surface, to the netting and the, and the fencing and, and all of that. We split that into two, put it out to bid, um, talked to, um, quite a number of, of companies. What we ended up with was three bids on the concrete. One of them was late and one bid on the pickleball-related things. Uh, the pickleball-related things was, um, was it quiet? The pickleball-related things, um, bid that we got is from Stillson Pickleball Tennis Courts. Um, a lot of times they go by Stillson and Gooch. Um, they do, the Gooch part of it, they do pool plastering and repair. We've actually talked to them about a potential bid when we go to replaster our, our pool. Um, and they gave us a bid for fifty-three thousand eight eighty-seven oh five. The concrete bid that was the, um, in the, in the, the vernacular is the apparent low bid. It was Southern Utah paving, um, and Bryce is the, the name of the contact that we worked with. I met Bryce, um, talked to him quite a few times, and they submitted the, uh, the low bid on the concrete, which was for, I just barely removed it, um, one hundred sixty-six thousand nine thirty-one.
How many courts?
That gives us four courts. Um, that puts us at two hundred twenty thousand eight eighteen. And we will have some additional expense as well. We have to put conduit in, um, for the, um, for the electrical that's gonna be there in case someday we put up lighting, which we would like to do at some point. The time to do that is obviously now. Neither of these bids included that, but it was our intention to, to install that ourselves and work with the contractors. Um, we, of course, are doing all of the ancillary work. We had, we had to move the water line. Um, there was costs associated with that. Um, and we, um, that was done by the water company to, to move that water line. And, um, there's possibility that we may have other costs that come up from the city's perspective. I don't expect a lot. Now, we also have, and to remind everybody, we have a two-hundred thousand dollar grant to work with from the county. So, um, roughly speaking, we're short somewhere between twenty thousand and plus. You know, my guess is, is we're gonna need maybe another twenty-five thousand. I don't know exactly, but, um, we're short at least twenty thousand eight eighteen and eleven. Just for known quantities, we're short that much, plus the cost of conduit, right? Um, we do have another grant from AARP, and that grant is to put in, um, shade structures and seeding. One of the requirements of that grant is that we have a kickoff celebration, um, pickleball tournament to, to, um, really celebrate this. Certain number of the volunteers and the attendees have to be over fifty, that, some of their requirements.
Has somebody sponsored that, or do, is it just a Parwin, the first tournament?
Well, it would, it would be like a made possible in part by AARP.
Yeah, they'll have signage that they want us to use and, and so forth. Now, as we're looking at, we're, we're trying to get that narrowed down. Um, Councilman Dean's been helping out. Molly's been spending a lot of time on this. And I've been looking at it as well. We, we, we amended the grant because part of their requirements was we had to have a, we had to have an event on Labor Day. And that's gonna be here tomorrow. Um, we do need to get this done this year for sure, and we do wanna get it done as soon as possible. But Labor Day was, was, was really difficult timeline. They have agreed to allow us to move the event to be associated with Fall Fest in Oc- October twelfth. So that's what we're shooting on. We're not slowing down our own process. We're just being thorough. But, um, as we're trying to define exactly how much it's gonna cost to do the shade structure and the seeding and everything that they require, it'll probably use up that twenty thousand dollars that they have. So I do fully expect us to still be short, um, some, some money. And, um, the question is, is, do, we, we can't award the bids if, if we're gonna be under budget, if we're gonna be over budget, unless, unless the council agrees to go ahead and make up the difference if needed. Um, there is potential that we could get some donations. There's potential that, I mean, we could use some, um, park impact fees. We used most of our park impact fees in what we did with the pool. I believe there's some left. I've been meaning to look into that. And today has been full of new, new fires to put out, metaphorically speaking, um, and not been able to do analysis on our park impact fees. But regardless of, of where we're at, there's a, we need to move forward and is the council comfortable with, with moving forward, knowing that we're over budget? Um, at, up to this point, other than what the water company did in moving that water line, we haven't spent any city cash. It's just been completely the county grant and this AARP grant. So we haven't put any of our own cash into the, into this thing yet. Um, it's just been sweat equity and, and so forth, what they call, um, in-kind match. But no, no cash match up to this point, so that's, that's where we're at as of right now.
Where do you feel, do you feel, do you have an idea of where we maybe could pull it from to try and make up the difference to get it done?
So my, my first instinct, this is a no-brainer for park impact fees. Um, impact fees, as you know, are relate, are designed, are there so that we can build new facilities related to growth. Certainly, building and developing parks is a totally appropriate use of impact fees. Um, maintain, maintaining existing parks is not, but building new parks is, so that's no-brainer. I just don't know how much we have, um, in that account, so it's, and if not, then the only other source would be general fund, which is where our Parks Department is.
Do you feel comfortable?
I do. I think it's a no-brainer.
That was gonna be my next question. Good job, Shelley.
There was some talk about how we could just do three courts. The problem is, is when you pour, the way that this is designed, we, we're doing a square that is a post-tension concrete square, and you put two courts on it.
Right.
You can't build half of a square of post-tension concrete. You would, you would have to leave the one side fully unexposed, but then you couldn't come in and pour the other one right next to it. You would literally have to space two courts apart, which would mess with our general plan. Doesn't that make any sense to build three courts instead of four? It would be, it would be a problem.
Okay.
It sounded like a Scott there, didn't it? It doesn't, anyways, so that's, that's where we're at.
That's the typical design of your pickleball courts that I've seen across the country.
Even, even numbers.
Yeah.
So my thought is, um, we, we agree to move forward. We see if we can get some donations, but we need to be full, we need to be willing and commit to backstopping it, even if we can't. That's, but I'm not telling you what to do. I'm saying this is a, I, we can't, we can't move forward and approve this, knowing that we're approving something that would put us over budget. Can't award that contract unless we have a commitment to do what we need to do.
So what, what would the wording be to approve? And if it goes over, over what we have in the park fund, we cover it through the general fund?
I would say that we take action to go ahead and award the bid, knowing that we are, we are potentially gonna have to amend our budget if needed to cover the difference.
Yeah. Okay. I'm trying to think what he said.
I'll make them, I'll make the motion, and then you can, whatever you want to do. I'm not telling you what to do either. Alright, I'll make a motion to award the pickleball court bid, um, to Stillson and to, uh, Southern Utah paving, with the knowledge that we may go over, over our budget, but we are prepared to either pay that through park impact fees or through the general fund.
There we go. I second that.
All those in favor?
Uh, before, I think we ought to put something in there about being able, if we're able to obtain any donations or anything that could go towards this fundraising in addition, just not limit it to our budget or, you know. Just, I, I, I mean, I could ask the pickleball community, is there any chance of getting any donations? Okay.
So I think that the motion is, this is just a catch-all, just in case, that there is the funding there if there are no donations. But we would, it's, we're not saying we wouldn't be open to donations.
Well, but I think it needs.
So Judy did just text Callie and said that, um, we have received about twenty-five thousand this year in impact fees. Um, some of these commercial projects, if you'd like to know, have paid larger impact fees. Um, plus we had about forty thousand unused from last year. That's Judy off the cuff. It sounds like in impact fees, there is some money there is available as well.
Sounds like we're good then.
We have a motion and a second. Is, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you. The motion carries. Now moving to item eleven, the AJM LLC annexation, and this is an update. Um, we did tentatively strike possible action, but Dan can get into that in the discussion.
Yeah, so let me give you, let me tell you what, where we're at. Um, of course, we, after the petition was certified to be, um, legal, essentially, we certified that on the, um, I can't remember the date, on the thirteenth. Um, there was thirty days, so by August twelfth, um, was the protest period, where, um, certain entities and individuals were able to file a protest. And if they file a protest, then it starts a different process. We did get, um, notice. In fact, we just, I received a phone call yesterday from the county clerk that a protest had been filed. They're required to give a copy to the city and just got a copy this afternoon of the protest. And according to the county clerk, it is a valid protest by one of the owners, and I, I can verify that that's the case as well. Um, so, and I've been talking with Scott, with, with legal on this. Um, if there is a notice, or if there is a protest that's filed, this is what happens. After the protest period is done, which means after August twelfth, in our next regularly scheduled meeting, the legislative body may deny the annexation or not deny it, and just wait and see what the boundary commission says. Um, so by doing nothing, the boundary commission moves forward. If we have intent to deny it because of the protest, that's the one meeting that we have to take any action. After that point, we just follow the boundary commission's, um, process.
What is the boundary commission?
The boundary commission is in, is made up of seven individuals. Two are elected officials from the county. Two are elected officials from municipalities within the county. The only stipulation is, is they can, two of them cannot be from the same city. Um, one of them could be from Parwin, if the, if the, if they chose that to be the case. You just can't have two from the same city, and it can't be somebody who's personally involved in the annexation. So, um, so the boundary commission, um, will, or that, they will be selected, those two, um, people that are elected officials of municipal governments in the county, and then the last four are residents. And they are chosen by a committee that's made up of all the mayors of the, um, towns, cities inside Iron County. So, um, when I asked the county, do you have the boundary commission formed? Cause if not, they give, they have thirty days to form the boundary commission upon receiving a valid protest. And the county clerk's office was unsure. They did have internally, they had assigned the two, um, county officials. And the county clerk thought that they, the boundary commission had taken some action in the past. So there very well may be a boundary commission already. However, state code has a whole bunch of rules on terms and how to fill. It's possible that it was formed and some of the commission had termed out and they'll have to replace them. It's also possible that it has never been formed and they'll have to form it. So we're, we, at this point, it is in the county's space to deal with that boundary commission. We now just become one of the peo, one of the entities that will interact with the boundary commission.
So date clarification, if that deadline is August twelfth, we have an early city council meeting of August eighth. So would that meeting then be August twenty-second, or would it need to be within the window before?
August twenty-second. It says in the first regularly scheduled legislative bodies.
After August twelfth.
After August twelfth. And the only thing that can happen in that meeting is if we chose to, we could deny the annexation. We may. Doesn't say we.
Based on the petition.
Doesn't say we shall make a decision. It just says we may deny it in that meeting or not. And at that point, it's, we just wait the boundary commission. We don't even have to bring it up if we, if we intend to just wait for the boundary commission anyway.
So we do nothing tonight on this?
We do nothing tonight. I just wanted to inform, um, everybody that we did have a protest. The one question that I asked Scott to talk about is it does also say, if we don't deny the annexation in that meeting, it says that the municipal legislative body may take no further action on the annexation, annexation petition until after the receipt of the commission's notice of its decision on the protest. So it basically says, we're supposed to press the pause button on the annexation and let the boundary commission do its thing. And I'm like, what does that mean? And, does, wanna tell me what you told, wanna tell us what you told me?
Well, first of all, thank you, Dan, for, I think it's a very clear articulation of where we're at legally and statistically. And he's very good at that, and, and I concur with, uh, where we're at. We can do nothing at this point. And I, I was even thinking since we, the protest just came today, or notice was an email from the clerk. I haven't seen the protest and I'm assuming none of the council members, the manager.
No, I gave the, the real physical copy to Callie right before this meeting.
Yeah, and the mayor, and nobody's seen it. So, um, the question Dan posed to me was, uh, does that mean pause means pause? Or can we still, uh, engage in, in exchange of ideas or back and forth in, in the, uh, with the potential scenario that we would approve it or we would deny it based upon negotiations? If they said, we're demanding one, two, three, four, we want a road right through this nice woman's front yard, and she's gonna have to move her carport, I mean, that would be ridiculous. Or if they have reasonable terms or, or not, is it worth pursuing a discussion? My response to him was, I think the safe answer legally and politically is that we do nothing. The pause means pause, because in a small community, if you say, well, we were simply discussing with them whether they're non-starters or this is even gonna be viable pending the outcome, that immediately gets spread throughout the community as, well, this is a done deal. They're already sitting down with them. They're talking about roads and there's gonna be a church here and a park there. And, and so, um, well, it's not my advi, my job to give political advice. It is, uh, my job to provide you with the best answer I can legally, and that would be that pause means pause. That we do nothing. We don't engage with Mr. Meisner. Um, we allow the strict construction of the, of the law to go forward, and that's what I would recommend.
And I think the intent is to not muddy up what the boundary commission is gonna have to work through, right? That's my, that's my guess, is what the intent was.
Yeah, a whole number of reasons.
Cause they're gonna have meetings and we're gonna have to go and provide information and so forth, right?
Alright, so with no action required to this item, if there, does the council have anything else they wanna talk about? We all understand the pausing. Okay, kinda nice, breathe. Everybody can breathe.
And the reason it's on the action committees, uh, action, is cause I thought that we would potentially take action, but we actually can't until after the protest period, so that's why it's on the action meeting.
Alright.
So we will take a breath and pause unless, and, and I guess if the council wants to put it on the agenda after the twelfth, that's the council's decision to put it on the agenda, whether we deny it at that point or not, so we'll look for your lead on that.
Alright, thank you both for that information, helping us understand this process better. Um, moving now to the amended, um, I don't even know what item number to call it. Um, twelve, so then we would just scoot the other numbers down? Okay, this is the previous item, which was thirteen, which is the David Burton property's own change.
It was fifteen.
Oh, fifteen, sorry. I write on my, everyone knows I write on my agenda too much. Okay, so, Dan, did you wanna introduce that?
Yeah, I can, I can definitely, um, I, I think we, yeah?
Um, I'm gonna come down this. Um, I asked Larry to come because you weren't present at the planning and zoning.
Oh, so you're gonna have Larry?
Yeah.
Talk about what happened in.
Yeah, if we could do that, okay.
Hello? Oh, good evening, everybody. Follow on to that last discussion and just wanna remind everybody that planning and zoning is not the legislative body in the city. Okay, with regard to the application to rezone the eight-acre parcel over off of, uh, three hundred east from industrial manufacturing to agricultural, um, we opened with a public hearing. There were no comments in the public hearing regarding that issue. Um, so once we closed the public hearing and got back into our regular meeting, um, we discussed various aspects of the property. And of course, one of those is whether or not we're in agreement with our general plan and our flume. And the flume, when they talk about zoning and, and our zoning rules, basically, when a piece of property is bordered on one side by one zone and on another side by a different zone, it's kind of. it's kind of a somebody else's turn jump ball. And so they're, looking at that request, we go, "Well, it's kind of sixes." Oh, great, we're putting it up there. Do up the other-
The laser printer, or the laser pointer?
So we are talking about, what map is this?
This is the flume. This property right here.
And yellow must be ag?
Yellow is, there is no ag on the flume, just light density residential.
So this is light what?
Yeah, we don't have any future use of ag. It goes residential or commercial or light.
So yellow, is there a?
Yellow is light density. The key.
Yeah, there we go, okay. So when we're talking about the flume, there's no zones on the flume. The flume is a, indicates potential zones by indicating, um, property densities. And so I didn't look to see what the gray was on there, is that, uh?
Industrial.
Industrial.
Manufacturing, yeah.
I N M.
Industrial, just called it industrial.
There we go, okay, thank you. Okay, so we look at the flume and we go, "Okay, this is potentially residential here, potentially residential here." This is a piece of city property that was recommended, looks like in the flume to be industrial. Um, and then this is, this seven hundred north there, that is the Burton piece of property. That is the subject of the application. So if we went to the zone, well, lem- I'll just talk to-
I have the zone map, if you want to.
Well, just give me this one for a minute. So this city piece right here to the south of the Burton property, even though then in the flume, that was designated to be an industrial piece of property, it is currently an agricultural piece of property. These pieces here and here are agricultural pieces of property, as is this piece of property. This piece of property right here belongs to the city and it is zoned agricultural, this long skinny strip.
Part of it is.
So, yes, so now we're, this is the zoning map. And so this gray parcel is the subject of the application. This is the city piece that has a well on it. This is, I don't know who owns this one now that I think about it.
That's the gravel pit.
This is the gravel pit?
That's the gravel pit. That's the gravel pit, the county's gravel pit.
And this is the airport.
That's the airport up there.
Yeah, okay, just, so, so this piece is the city piece, whoops. And even though this is a contiguous piece of property up through here, it has split zoning. So that is not a property boundary right there, that is just split zoning. It says, "This is industrial going north from here." You'll see all this property up here is also industrial to the north. And again, this demonstrates clearly that this is all ag property. So we look here and we go, "Here's this property, here's, here is industrial here, here is ag here and here." And we look at that and we go, "Well, again, when you've got one zone on one side and another zone on another side, the property's kinda up for grabs." Now, originally, this property back in the early days, before this most recent, I guess, acquisition, um, was agricultural property back in the nineteen eighties sometime. And then when it changed hands, it was rezoned by those owners to industrial for their use. And now the request is to move it, move this piece, excuse me, back to agricultural. Now, a couple of things about this piece of property. So the city well sits somewhere about right there. There's a thing called a well per- or sort, water source protection zone. And zone one is a hundred feet, which, uh, in diameter around the wellhead. That does not impact this parcel. However, zone two goes out and on the, uh, Department of Environmental Quality map, it, it encompasses sort of this section of the property if you drew a line through it right here. So it's kinda like the western twenty-five percent or twenty percent maybe. Another thing to consider is, because this is industrial, here's a good example, and this piece is agricultural. If this agricultural piece were to go to residential, then there's a two hundred foot space from this boundary line inward on this, in on this property where you cannot put any buildings, is, is at least industrial. You probably couldn't, if it was ag, it'd be different rules. But as it sits as industrial, that could be a problem. Now, this city piece, whether or not it would ever be split up or whatever go residential, would also cause a two hundred boundary, boundary to be applied against the property on the su- southern edge. So the property height, or, or, well, I call it height, looking at it on this document, is two hundred, about two hundred and sixty-five feet. So once you take two hundred, if you were to take two hundred feet across here, there's sixty-five feet left at the north boundary that you could actually use for in- industrial buildings. See how much of that I shot? Yet, one of the other issues with this property is, because this is a city piece, there's no real access to this property. There is a prescriptive easement, which means historically, you can use that easement for what it's customarily been used for, um, which, I don't know what that would be, but it's not a full easement like you would expect on a piece of property. Um, therefore, that makes this property as an industrial property, actually almost as any property, it's an illegal lot. And the reason for that is it doesn't have any street frontage. So we have a piece of code that, fifteen, fifteen oh eight point oh four oh lot standards. And pretty much what it says, it's blah, 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 and then it says, "Located and shall have frontage upon a fully improved, dedicated, or publicly approved street, or upon a private street, or right-of-way approved by the Perwin City Planning Commission and City Council before a building permit may be issued." So as that property sits, you pretty much can't get a building permit. And so as an industrial piece of par- property, it's, you're not gonna get much done with that. And by the way, you can't build on it in ag either, that would, until it gets some sort of an easement to a street. Um, it was also mentioned in the meeting that, uh, by council, that re- that zoning this from industrial to agricultural was sort of a downzoning step. Uh, the normal progression, if, if we were to just take something that was already in ag, we would expect it to go into residential. However, that did not happen on this city piece of property. And so one wonders, you know, and s-
Well, the city property's never been rezoned.
Pardon?
City property's never been rezoned.
Well, that's pretty interesting.
It probably should be. We haven't rezoned a lot of our stuff, we should zone it to what we're using it for, right?
Yeah, and, and all I'm saying is, that's the status quo as it sits now. What we could do or should do is a good point, but it doesn't play here, I guess. Any questions about that?
So is, is a gravel pit for the county, is that agriculture?
Yes.
It's zoned agricultural, but same thing, its use has been a gravel pit way, 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 way back. And you would most likely call that probably a industrial, you know, i- a mine, it, you're mining gravel out of the ground is what, you know. Um, a lot of these properties, um, when there's not an application for a building permit and there's no need, and, and Larry has talked to us a lot about how we should be-
Doing our homework?
No, we should be zoning our, our own stuff before we put it to use, the correct zone.
Yes.
That hasn't always been the case, in fact, rarely has it been the case that that has been done, so.
And then the next lot next to the gravel pit is the city's, right?
This is the city property.
Going, it's direct now, right there.
This is the county property, and the county owns this property as well.
Oh, okay.
And their intent is to continue to mine gravel out of that piece as well.
And I would assume if the city rezones, they're gonna rezone it to industrial manufacturing.
Um, we're not gonna zone it for agricultural. I can, I mean-
Because it's already got-
Our use right now is it's a well and it's, and it's, we, we store power poles, we store, um, equipment there. Um, our future use, um, we haven't really discussed much. It's kind of like a, a, a little bit of an expansion yard at the moment.
Bob Platt's here, so we'd like to have him take the time he'd like to, because he's the, the, uh, surveyor, the engineer that's, I've hired.
Yeah, I'll be brief. Uh, yeah, we prepared the zoning cha- uh, the change map for Burton land and livestock. And, yeah, the long and the short, it is a kind of a downzone. But, uh, we're not, we're, is this work? Uh, maybe, I don't know, I guess not. But the intent is to, uh, downzone it back to agricultural. It is not a spa zone, it is, it's adjoints, uh, existing agricultural zoning, and it was received a positive recommendation from the planning commission the other night, so that's where we're at.
So when you say we're zoning it back to what it was, so it was ag at one point?
It was ag in the nineteen eighties, apparently.
Yeah, like-
Somewhere in the eighties or nineties, it got, as I understand it, it was rezoned to industrial and mine, I N M. Or in industrial use. And now we're, the Burton's desire is to zo- zone it back-
To move it back.
-to agriculture like it was, yeah.
Okay, we gave, is that all you've got? So, you've got the exhibits there, if you want to take a chance, look at them and ask any questions.
Can I ask you, maybe, and you don't have to tell me, I guess, if you don't want, but what is your intent?
I don't have any, other than, like I told, the planning and zoning, leave it the way it is and fix the fence,
If you wanna-
Improve the vegetation and just use it for pasture right now.
Yeah, I was just wondering if you were wanting to put cattle or sheep or-
I mean, that's what I do.
Something of that nature. Well, I know that's what you do, but I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is in, this is, and, uh, see, the ownership is Burton Ranches. And I'm a vested, you know, partner, interest in it. So, I mean, that's what we, we just want it conducive with our other properties right now. And we, it used to be ag, I mean, we owned it. And then we, we, uh, I don't know, I'm just gonna leave it at that, so. Anyway, we've got it now, and so that's what we want to do. Not that it has anything to do with zoning or, you know, whatever, but it has water and it has, uh, irrigation and culinary water on it. But is it, like, I think Larry was trying to explain, and with the present situation with the, um, access, y- you can't even use it under the industrial manufacturing zone really very well.
I'm not a rancher, but if it's surrounded by county gravel pit, um, how do you get your cows in there?
Prescriptive easement, I mean, you can get-
I, I didn't, like I said, I didn't.
Yeah, and you can get, I mean, eh, wouldn't you say industrial manufacturing, that's like having to take, uh, you know, having a, a product, a regular delivery of a, you know, a truck or have access for other people, clients or whatever, I guess you'd say. You, you'd have to have some kind of a secured access, but-
And, and can I comment on that? And I, last thing I'm gonna do is get in between, um, interested parties on this. Um, just to give some background onto the access, um, the, the owner that had it immediately prior, um, had an agreement with the city for access. Um, that was not something that was, um, it was not recorded as an easement. It was an access agreement, a legal document that expired. Um, so, basically, the, the question is, when it comes to access, is what will the city do in the future if there's something requested? My understanding with a prescriptive easement is, um, it has to be something that is, is, is requested or insisted upon, and there has to be a, a decision made that it is a prescriptive easement for a certain use. Um, obviously, that, that is some factor here, right? What sort of access is there? There is a gate, there has been access, the property has been used. I would think that a prescriptive easement could be established for sure. Um, but the access issue is gonna reflect, is gonna be an issue whether it's used for ag, whether it's used for industri- Actually, no, let me take that back. Any new and additional use beyond what it has historically been used for would be new. So if a building permit came in to build a building, I would think that we would need to work through the access first. In the meantime, unless we're gonna challenge access to that property, it would fall under an assumed prescriptive easement, but that is not, that is, but it's, I mean, that's a, an issue regardless of whether it's zoned, is all I was saying.
Does the council have any other questions, or would you like to discuss this any further before you make a motion?
I don't have any other questions.
I don't have any.
Sharon, do you have any? Okay.
David.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion. And Callie, is this a roll call or is this a regular standard vote?
Um, I don't know, we're amending the, the general plan, I think it should be a r- roll call.
We-
We're amending the zone, the-
I'd always, we've always taken a roll call when we-
Yeah, I think we need a roll call on it.
Zone change.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the Burton property's own change from industrial manufacturing to agriculture.
All right, um, do we have a second? All right, so if we don't have a second, I don't even know what we do, what do we do?
Well, that motion dies. So there could be another motion, or you could take some action.
So Mayor, I'd like to ask you, as you recall, your rec- your roll call, why? I'd like an answer from each one of them, why? Because if we have to pursue this, we'll have to know.
So you, so should I second that and then tell them why, or what my vote would be? I don't know what, how this runs.
You can, no.
Okay, so-
We're back in the space of debate because the motion died.
So, so we just, just, just me, uh, why? I'm, I'm looking at the, the city property, and then the city property in the frontage road, and then gravel pit, and then the other Iron County. So it's sort of surrounding that little piece of property. You have industrial on one side, you have the city property on the other side, you have the city property in front, and then you have the county pit, still agriculture, but maybe they should change that. Um, so that's, that's, that's my, my concern is, uh, so that's, that's my concern.
But those are all zoned agricultural, right?
If it doesn't matter- If it doesn't matter, um, why change it?
Exactly.
That's my.
If it's irrelevant, why you wanna change it?
Well, is he able to put, well, this is just me, cause I don't.
You got a lot of residential homes and stuff right there too, like and you wanna put cows and all this stuff on there for ag. I don't know how well that's gonna work out. So. So what's your reason? Because it doesn't need to be backward zoned. I mean, I don't see the point in changing it when it's a landlocked piece of property anyway. So, I'd leave it alone. And do what? Exactly, you can't do anything with- with it either right now, so it's landlocked, so.
And I- I agree with both of them on the- the zoning. Plus, I also feel that as a council person, we should not do any personal business as, when we're on the council. That's just my opinion. That's all.
So that means that as a individual, as a council person, you can't be treated as a citizen, as a regular citizen. And do business as a regular citizen does and be treated the same way.
I'm not.
Have the same opportunity.
I'm not gonna get into discussion with it, that's just how I feel, David, I'm sorry.
I mean, you definitely have that right, for sure, I think you do, but. I don't know, I just don't see the point. Rochelle?
Um, well. I mean, I feel like. Without getting into too much, I feel like if it was anybody else but David Burton asking for this, we would have probably approve it. Because it's a piece of property that somebody wants to make use of it. I don't see any harm changing it back to agriculture if he wants to put his animals on it. I mean, just as a- a private citizen, like if it was me. Would I have to wait four years to come before the council to do something? I don't feel like, for me personally, that's right. And, I mean.
We're not all saying.
I don't.
I- I think he has the right to be here to ask for it.
I do feel like he does too, um, and I don't personally see a problem with changing it back to agriculture if he's wanting to. Build a better fence and put his, some animals on it to make use of a landlocked property. I mean.
Well, to be clear, he can use it i- i- in- in its current pat- you can put animals on any zone with restrictions. With agriculture, you have more freedom to do animals, right now zoned agr- industrial. Um, our animal code restricts you to, does anybody remember the fun alpaca thing we went through? I, what I'm saying is, council. Um, you can have up to four large animals on any zone. In agricultural, you could have more, and that's what I said, you could do more with it, but you could have some animals on it, is all I said.
Yeah.
Four animals per acre.
Large animals, I don't think it's per acre, we could look it up, I could tell you what it is, if you wanna know.
I think that was another.
Think it's valid.
And- and I would just opine in the defense of the council, and I'd say it if you were up here today, but it's not really a process where. The applicant gets to cross examine the council members, why are you voting against it, what are you, do you know what I mean? If it fails for lack of a second, it fails for lack of a second, it puts everybody in a awkward position. So, I throw that out.
Should've said that five minutes ago.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right.
So, is- is this, does this just fail by default?
Or do you want another motion?
Would it be better to have a motion to deny it? We had a failed motion to approve it, that's all that's happened.
Semantics, I guess, he- he took it to the planning commission, they recommended approval, it came before the city council and the mayor.
Gotcha.
And, uh, asked for a zone change and- and the vote, it was not voted for. I don't think they have to affirmatively on- on favor of denying.
So it fa- it fails by lack of a positive rec- or.
No zone change.
No zone change, gotcha.
Was not approved.
So moving along now into our work meeting. We have, um, McLean and Devon here from Jones and DeMille. And they are going to start with item number twelve, the transportation master plan.
Okay, you're in control again, Kelly.
My name is Devon Wilson with Jones and DeMille Engineering. I'm also here with McLean Farmer, works at Jones and DeMille. He'll be, um, chiming in too and part of the next, uh, item on the agenda.
And, and by the way, this is a work meeting, um, they're gonna give a presentation. We need to decide to tonight if there's no action that could be taken, but we need to decide if we want to hold a public hearing. Next time, whether we want to put it on action item next time, but tonight's just to he- to have the presentation. Just wanted to kinda clear that up for everybody, there's no action being made tonight, so. We have proceeded past planning commission with a fo- with a favorable recommendation to adopt, but there's still work. For you guys to- to look at and consider, so.
So today, I'd like to kinda walk you through the plan, what we did and what we've come up with. Um, and then we can talk more about whether we wanna do the public hearing and next steps at the end. Um, could I plug my laptop in to pull it up on here? That'd be the easiest way?
Yep. How long's that cord?
Okay. So just a little background about what the transportation plan is and what it's aiming to do. So, um, the transportation plan is evaluating the existing transportation network and system in Parawan County. Um, and working with the city officials and through traffic engineering. Um, planning future roadway segments and preserving, um, corridors so that as Parawan grows and development occurs. That the proper roadways will be built to ensure that people can move from subdivisions as needed. Travel where they need to go. Um, the main part of this plan will be in this map section and we'll go through. The proposed roadway sections that we came up with, um. But I'm gonna kinda walk you through how we got there before we start diving into the specific roads. So this transportation master plan comes with this website that, um, will be linked on Parawan's website for the public to see once it has been adopted. We, as part of this plan, coordinated with UDOT, with city officials, planning and zoning commission. And Iron County to coordinate and integrate with their plans for the transportation and. Um, get, we have held public hearings for, or public open houses for public comment. And presented to the planning and zoning commission a few times and got their recommendation. This plan includes some background socioeconomic data that helps inform transportation planning decisions. Um, and then as part of this website, we also have a transportation master plan report. Um, this is a document that gives guiding principles for construction, um, construction and traffic study standards to guide requirements as, um, transportation structures and roadways are built, so this master plan report, as you can kinda see here. It's pretty lengthy, if you'd like to read through it, but. It talks a little bit about requirements for how many accesses we can have on a road or how. Far apart things need to be spaced to ensure that transportation flows smoothly. And that newly constructed roads are up to the standards adopted by Parawan City. And then in this documents page, we also have the appendices for that master plan report and then we just have links to. The municipal code, the general plan, land use and development and the OHV information to ATVs, uh, things like that. So those are just links for people that are here quickly to go to the Parawan's website. Um, and then we have a definitions page, some of the terms we use in the report or in the maps, if there are questions. These have some common transportation definitions. So, diving into the maps a little bit, this is the main portion of the plan. So this first map is roadway classification, so this on the left is the existing roadway classification that we have today. And so, we have interstates, arterials and collectors here and then local roads. That kind of delineates the amount of traffic that a road will use. That, um, guides some of the standards and how it should be constructed, how wide the road needs to be.
And, and can I just jump in? Th- what is on the left is not the existing transportation master plan. That's the existing UDOT classification of the, of the, of roads that we have to, um, file with UDOT.
That's correct. So this doesn't include any roads that are not built, these are just ones that are classified, so are proposed here on the right. Could be reclassifying existing roads or proposing roads and their classification. So as you can see here, say, two hundred west here. On the existing has no classification, it's just a local road. In our proposal, we propose to become a minor collector to, cause of the school traffic. So this plan, there are many, the dotted dashed lines here, the dashed lines are proposed roads. Roads that are not currently built and the solid lines are existing roads. There are lots of proposed roads on this map, that does not mean that the city intends to go out and start building as many of these roads as quickly as we can. It is to preserve a transportation network that is connected as development occurs. So say this road out here to the east of Parawan would not be constructed. Unless development was occurring in this area and at that point, you'd have to go through the due processes of working with the property owners. Deciding on the exact location of that road, who would fund and build what portions. But during that process, you can see. Preserve that idea that we need traffic to be able to connect. Rather than blocking off and just having a bunch of cul-de-sacs and no way for development to connect into the transportation. System and cause congestion. There's some issues without planning, where you'll have a road. And then you can build a house right on the end of a road and block it off and then that road can't ever extend, even if out to the east it were to develop. So there's some sections we ran into where that was the case. Say here, if we wanted to extend Center Street out, there's a house right at the end, so if it wasn't the transportation plan that we really wanted Center Street to go out here. Um, that could have been a consideration when this house was built, and there's examples of that wherever. That's not necessarily saying that this house shouldn't have been built there, but just as an example. Does anyone have any questions on what this is showing before we dive into specific roadways? Perfect. We'll kinda start at this southwest end and- and work our way over. We have worked with the planning and zoning commission in several meetings. About this flood channel crossings. We wanted to limit the amount of flood channel crossings so we don't have to maintain every block. Uh, a bridge or a low water crossing across that flood channel. So these yellow lines were, the locations are reselected to have flood channel crossings. And so, any traffic or development in this area will have to go to one of those yellow roads to cross down to Old Highway ninety one.
And one thing, and of course, you're not looking at the old map, but the old map was done in two thousand two. Back when it was a ditch that you could step across if you had tall legs. Um, and it, it showed, how many crossings? When we started this? Almost every block had a crossing, that's not, that's not feasible when you're talking about building expensive bridges. Even low water crossings are quite expensive, so as he said, we went through quite a process to d- determine, um, what made sense. Um, and essentially, if I could boil it down. We have a crossing at Main Street, we have a crossing at six hundred and we have a crossing clear out at twenty two hundred. There's two private bridges in between those, which are not part of the city's roadway network. What we're basically talking about doing is removing some of those crossings, but leaving them evenly spaced. So that leaves a crossing at, is that sixteen hundred? There, that's where there is the location of a current. Um, no, I guess there isn't a private bridge there, there is no, there's no bridge there. Um, leaving a crossing at one thousand, the one that is on the map there, the city actually already owns half of the easement needed. So the city road goes right up to that and on the other side of it, we own half of the easement. So that made sense to keep that crossing, that's just east of, um, what's the treatment facility right there? Um, Gate?
Lions Gate.
Lions Gate. And then six hundred, of course, is the existing crossing, but I also wanted to point out, and this was kind of a late discussion. There used to be until, just until the last flood, twenty eighteen, there was a crossing at three hundred west, a low water crossing. And the flood took that crossing out. We, we decided to go ahead and leave that on the future map in case we wanted to go back in and put that low water crossing back in. Yeah, we. It's on your street, so that's on the map. So basically, what this leaves is Main Street, three hundred, six hundred, one thousand, sixteen hundred and twenty two hundred. And that essentially means sometime in the future, two bridges or low water crossings would be built. Out of, out- outside of six hundred and three hundred would be restored. So, we all know how hard and expensive these things are, so this was, uh, there was a lot of discussion about it. Um, and I do wanna clear up, there was, um, a group of people, there was a crossing at about approximately twelve hundred west. It's right about where his map is and we even had meetings about this. Um, they did not want that crossing to go through and we really didn't need one if we were gonna keep one thousand. So this map formally removes that as a crossing. The, the planning commission voted to downgrade that to a residential road, it used to be a corridor, like a minor collector or something. And this plan officially eliminates it as a crossing, but leaves a residential road going back there. And that. Right now it's, right now it's a driveway. He owns it, he owns a driveway and it's like twelve feet across. So, if they wanna develop back there, they need to build a road and then they can develop back there, but it won't go through. It won't go through. So, that's just kind of an update on the crossings and, and things like that. Thanks for letting me butt in, Devon.
Oh, you're better at explaining than me, so jump in.
No, I've just been living this for two years, so.
Um, we have increased the Old Highway ninety one from a minor collector to a major collector as well to better reflect. Traffic patterns, um.
Same with four hundred north.
Yeah, four hundred north and Gap Road have also been classified as major collectors. Yeah, four hundred north and Gap Road have also been classified as major collectors. Um.
And the primary reason is we talked about that was to preserve the right of way width, um, to get out into the valley and to get to the old highway, because it is a ninety nine foot ri- right of way. Most places, it's in the city. And that, that collector, that purple would maintain it as a ninety nine foot right of way.
We're gonna skip two hundred south and come back to that at the end, 'cause I'm sure there'll be some comments on that area. Um, going to the east, there have been some developers interested in developing this property to the east of the baseball fields here. We have coordinated with them on locations of these roads, and we designated through this map that a major collector and a minor collector would need to be connecting to this area. Um, and associated with major and minor collectors, one of the main, um, reasons we do that for proposed roads is that tells the developer how wide the right of way needs to be for newly constructed roads, and how wide the pavement will need to be when they construct them. In this area, we have extended out four hundred north and, and two hundred north here to connect in. And this old Paraguna Road here was also a topic of discussion. Iron County expressed some interest in keeping Old Paraguna Road and its right of way. That doesn't, um, make a lot of sense, uh, traffic flow wise, especially since it's not currently used or available for use by the public. Um, so, in our plan, we have it to abandon that right of way and create new rights of way where we have proposed roads drawn in. So right here, we kind of use this to connect in with the houses here and the way the parcels are laid out, rather than cutting a parcel next to a house, or dri- driving through the house. We can't keep that grid block system right. So, we've brought that road along that right of way for this stretch to connect back in.
Real quick question, the, the far right, it's a minor, and you have a major going through, like right next to the cemetery.
Yes.
Down there, as, as a major, why wouldn't that yellow, that's in the middle of nowhere, be a major collector route?
Yeah, so we had it for connectivity here, kinda by the cemetery, how this road flows and could continue up to hit the state route. And then this comes in at a, at an intersection. So rather than having the major collector have that sharp turn and come around the edge, we had.
How wide does a major collector route have to be?
Um, we can pull up exactly.
Do you know off the top of your head, 'cause we measured that.
I think they're both the same.
Okay.
You had just measured that, you know, a couple days ago, and so he's, I think, thinking about that being sixty feet.
Yeah, it's sixty feet.
Sixty feet is two hundred north?
Uh, where the cemetery is, and.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there, there is not enough width for what we're designating it as a road, but it still needs to be designated as that.
Oh, okay.
Because the new, uh, the, the additional road that you build will be built right. And when the day comes, hopefully the day never comes, that sixty six feet, or I think it was sixty six feet, is not enough to pass the traffic there. Then at that point, then you have to determine what, how to, how to go about dealing with that. And maybe it is no center lane, and whereas otherwise you would have enough space for a center lane, things like that. But it doesn't mean we wouldn't wanna, we'd wanna downgrade it everywhere else, just 'cause it has a problem with that area, so. And, and for two seconds, because I know that this is a sensitive issue in this area, 'cause we're talking to Alex Meisner annexation. Don't be mad at me, McLean. I do want to show what the existing. Yeah, you have to click, click back to yours. What the, the existing map that was done in two thousand two, this is not a, this is not a, much of a deviation from what has been there. You'll notice that we didn't have Old Highway ninety one on there. We're not putting it on the new one. You do have this same grid system. So, this is not much of a departure at all. The, we're not, we're not blazing new territory by, by doing the plan the way it is. It's very consistent with, with what is on our current plan right now. It's just, it's just looking a little bit more in depth. This, this doesn't have hardly any parcels on it, doesn't have anything, and it was done in two thousand two.
So is that twelve hundred east, the one that we're talking about on the other map, does that go through anybody's property?
Oh, yeah. They all, they all are either through property or on the property lines.
Oh, okay.
But this, this map doesn't even have any parcel specific data on it. And, and, and I hesitate to bring that up. I just want people to realize that we haven't gone in and blazed new stuff, um, and when he said we, we, we talked to the, the developer, this, this was, we talked to a few developers that had some annexation in mind, and, and they asked what our transportation master plan was, and I said, "Well, we're in the middle of working on it. You're welcome to reach out to Jones and DeMille and, and, and see where we're at on it." And so, but this is the existing one. Now I'm gonna switch back, and you're gonna have to switch back, Kelly. I hope you're done looking at the existing one, 'cause.
So Dan, when.
And when I mentioned those crossings over there, you can see what I'm talking about. There's all the crossings that were on the ma- map before.
None of those roads, such as the twelve hundred that John was asking about, those are not dedicated or, or anything, right?
They're lines on a map that aren't even in the city at the moment.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, they're, no, they're just within our proposed potential annexation area. And so, this is planning. You know, you're drawing lines on a map, which is out in the future, which may never come to pass. But in the meantime, if I own property, if I wanna develop, I at least know what the city's intent is. And if, and if you can, if you can telescope out there in the future that says, "We need a, a, a corridor to tie traffic in," then people can plan around that as they're planning development. And that's the whole reason why it's done.
And I think the important thing about the two thousand and two map is there have been a lot of questions about certain elements. And this is the map that the city had on file, part of the general plan for a very long time. I haven't seen a version earlier than this one, but this is the two thousand and two, which was the one we were functioning off of.
Okay, I'll clarify that. And McLean just barely, um, double checked on our, on our sections. It's actually sixty six foot right of way on that purple. It's just the other.
So existing one's under ninety nine, we're keeping those ninety nine. So we're not downgrading to give.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
And on, in a situation where we have sixty and we need sixty six, that would just need to be modified through that stretch.
Yeah, so we have it set up in the standards that all existing right of way widths will not be diminished by this plan. Just for newly built roads, the requirement is sixty six for the purple and yellow both.
So it sounds like we're fine with the sixty six through there. Um. So now, keep in mind what I just showed you, and look at that grid, and you'll see it's pretty, pretty consistent.
Sorry, so, just so you get some, so when Julie Wood was talking about six hundred north, were we adding something in there? Something, a road that's, is this what she's talking about?
Mm-hmm.
It's on the map, and we're putting a road through her property?
Julie White.
Oh, what, oh, I even wrote Julie Wood, and I know it's white. Oh, and she's not even here. Okay. I'm glad.
And, and I can reach out to, to Julie, and we'll certainly invite her to come to Public Comment as well. But, um, I don't know where Julie lives. Okay, so the six hundred north that would be referred to would be going right through the city's property, and then on the outside tying that into that other. Is that right? She's over by Dale Tanner?
Right here.
So, and again, um, and there's been a lot of, in fact, from comments in the annexation meeting that we had, I've, I've learned that there was a lot of misunderstandings from what was said by me. Um, and just because something is on a map does not mean the city goes out and.
Just goes and builds it.
Builds it or takes it. Um, there's only two ways that this would, a road would get put in. One, a very, very, very rare case, the city could do eminent domain. That's very rare. Only usually done if there is a very critical thing that would benefit the entire city, and there's one landowner who will not negotiate. We're, w- we're not gonna consider doing that for a developer, right? What usually happens is, somebody wants to develop their own property, and we say, "Okay, we need to have a road that accomplishes this. It's on our plan. Can you bring us in a set of plans that accomplishes what our general plan says needs to be in there?" So, to Julie White's point, if she wanted to develop her property, at that point, we would say, "Okay, six hundred north needs to connect, because it's on our plan." In the meantime, we're not gonna say, "You're gonna put six hundred north in," or "We're gonna put it in for you." It would be if she wanted to develop. Um, and that same thing goes for any of the potential ingress egress related to the proposed Alex Meisner, um, subdivision, which is something that the city council is gonna have to have a good discussion about. How many points of ingress egress would be required, should he annex and then subdivide within the city? Um, and that would have to be figured out. But even then, let's say that we say, "You have to have ten," right? That's still upon the developer to, to, to acquire that land, and to negotiate with landowners to get those, that, that land, and then deed it to the city after those roads are built. The city does not go in and do that. We're not gonna require ten if we do that, but the question is, is two enough? Is one enough? Is three enough? Will we only do it if we, if he does four? I mean, that's the conversation the city is gonna have to have. But even if we make that requirement, does not mean the city will go in and do that on his behalf. He would have to then figure it out. And we would want to see it be consistent with our master plan. So, that's just to answer some of those questions.
Yeah, I wish she would have stayed.
Julie?
Just to hear, just to hear that.
I'll talk to her, I'll talk to her about it.
Just so that she knows.
Perfect.
And that's my only issue with this, with this, with the way, the way it shows. And I've, I've gone the rounds with these guys, and they're like, "Dan, this is the correct way to show it." You don't see that there are actually existing lines that are on the existing map. It looks like they're all new lines drawn. And in the reality, um, what you see on the left side is UDOT's designation, 'cause we have to report to UDOT how many roads we have designated as major collectors, minor collectors, and all of that. And if we get over a certain ratio of major collectors, UDOT themselves say, "No, you can't, you can't do that." And they have something to say. They give us class B road, road funds, class C road funds, sorry, the county gets class B. And so, th- they want to see that our total proportion of certain classifications of roads doesn't get out of balance. That's what's on the left, and anyways.
And to pursue certain funding sources for improvements or construction of a road, it has to be classified a certain thing. So, classifying something as a minor or major collector could aid you in getting funding to construct or improve that road.
And the importance of the classifications are pretty critical, because I know when I was, um, you know, new in my responsibility here, I learned that our bridge had an issue, that the road that we were trying to build it on wasn't properly classified. So, I mean, planning in advance of things that we know are potentially gonna happen in the future, it's really hard to do then when you've already got momentum and funding, and they're like, "Wait, that road's not even classified, correct?"
Yeah, that was at one hundred west. We would've had to reclassify one hundred west before we could've moved forward with the joint highways. That's a perfect example. But it's good where it's at on Main Street. I wanna clear that up.
So all of these steps matter, even though they feel very, like everyone just gets very high, uh, alert. These things matter, because down the road, we don't wanna be flat-footed, and somebody's gotta do the planning. But it always makes me feel better when I know this has been in place for a very long time, and, and in many cases, we're just updating.
All right, I'll move along then. Up on this airport area, McLean is going to, in the next agenda item, talk a little bit about this airport, um, industrial park plan that they're doing. So, I, we'll leave that for later as well. Moving down here, we have proposed that the state route, rather than coming in at the diagonal to about five fifty north, that, along that dirt road, along seven hundred north, that the highway following curve along that to intersect Main Street at a ninety degree, and then continued that grid system to the west of Maine, and up here near the interchange, added some roads for some development. There's been some interest of a gas station and some other things up in that area. Any questions on this section? Coming over by the underpass here, Gap Road and four hundred, four hundred north here, we have extended, um, six hundred west to connect up to four hundred north. We know there's some terrain challenges in this area, so that might be a difficult one to construct if it were to come to that. Um, we have left it on our plan to show that that would be best for connectivity, um, but if there were development in that area, it'd have to go through the, the due process of the city and make a decision there. We have realigned this intersection here, right by the underpass, to better, uh, to improve sight distance, meaning where the cars, if they're stopped here, can see both ways, so there aren't, um, crashes at this intersection. That was a safety concern there. And we've brought that yellow line as a frontage road down along the freeway to connect down into two hundred south and all the way down to Old Highway ninety one at the flood crossing. This area here has caused a little bit of confusion just from the looks of it, but the main goal of this, these lines here, is to improve this intersection. This intersection is difficult to see. Um, the plan is to remove this section of the road and realign two hundred north, so that you can see better, and it's a T right here. And then, with removing this, add this road that connects down.
And you remove it by putting in six hundred west all the way through. And that was, that was contemplated when that subdivision was improved. You'll notice there's the section open-ended on either side for six hundred to go through. That is on our existing plan as well.
That's my house. Well, the one on the left of the line.
This one?
No.
In the subdivision? So that's, that's consistent, but it is tweaking it a little bit, um, tweaking the way, what I'm gonna call the frontage road comes into four hundred. Um, so that there's, what, good sight distance, I think, was the main reason for it to come in a little bit, a little bit farther away from its current alignment.
Yeah.
And there is a, a proposed annexation of that small area right there. Uh, we haven't yet received a petition on that. Um, that's a current peninsula into the city of county land, and again, if they come in and, and complete the annexation and wanna do a subdivision, they're gonna have to plan for that po- piece of that, um, frontage road to go through, not to mention how it ties into these other residential roads, so.
In this area, we've drawn in some local roads to show connecting existing roads. So if these were to develop, we wouldn't have all cul-de-sacs and no connecting streets. Um, and then in these fields out here, we've kinda extended roads and made a grid system of local roads. And then from the frontage that comes down, there's also a minor collector that comes down six, uh, one thousand west as well, just to have some spacing between those local roads and some slightly larger roads. So, let's talk about two hundred south. Um, so this has been the largest topic of discussion with this master plan. We've had meetings after meetings about this, right, and we've, we've discussed a lot of potential options. And we've- we've discussed a lot of potential options, and it is a bit of a difficult situation. As Dan mentioned on the old map, this two hundred south continuing through as the arterial was on the existing plan from two thousand and two. Um, the reason we have chosen to select that, well, there are several reasons. Um, we have drafted a memo that kinda documents our process and our, um, professional opinion on the engineering reasons for doing two hundred south. Currently, directing all the traffic to Center Street does cause some congestion, but as Brianhead continues to grow and visiting traffic grows, issues at Center and Main will become a bigger problem. Cars backing up multiple blocks, um, pedestrian and school zone safety, um, for routes to school of kids walking near these, uh, commercial areas. We understand that two hundred south creates an impact for the property owners, the people who live along that road. Currently, a lot of the traffic, rather than going to Center Street, does continue along two hundred south despite the stop signs and the arrow pointing to Center Street. Um, so if we were to fully discourage people from using two hundred south, we discussed blocking it off. That creates other concerns with people coming up here by the pool to connect back into Center Street while they're learning that it's blocked off before they understand that they can't go that way anymore. And then, as traffic volumes increase, again, all is funneled through one intersection in Parawan, which is already pretty busy. That's kind of a- a brief summary of our- our findings or our recommendation. Does anyone have any comments on this area?
I don't think I was distracted, but I could've been. Did you talk about Center and three hundred, that intersection, and the possibility of making that safer for pedestrian crossing?
Yeah, so, uh, this intersection is a issue for crossing. There's a lot of kids crossing for the pool here, and because of the angles that the roads come in, can be difficult for fast-moving cars to see children. We've talked about the potential for doing a roundabout here or making other intersection improvements to better be able to see pedestrians and have safe crossing. Um, even with that, there still causes concerns if we did shut off two hundred south. That's why we would prefer to keep Center Street and two hundred south open to provide options for traffic coming from the south interchange to go to the canyon and from the north interchange to go through the canyon, um, and coming back down the mountain. They can go either route as well. So, that would involve- two hundred south would not become that arterial, that major road without improvements. It would have to be improved, widening to, um, allow higher traffic volumes to go along that road. The proposed section also includes sidewalk on one side and a multi-use path or a bike path on the other side to allow all the residential properties to still have access without, um, being worried about the higher traffic volumes along that road.
Can I just say something about two hundred? You'll have to believe me, I can pull up the map if you wanted to see it. Um, that has always been there as a corridor, a lot of- lot of discussion about this. The question whether- was to change it, and- and what does that mean as of right now? And I- what I've told people, um, but this is more than just Dan's opinion. This is the city manager's opinion. We don't have any intent to change the way things are working any time in the future, in the near future at all. Um, I think it would be a mistake to take it off the plan as a future through- through way- some of the conversation and the public statements. And we'll forward you all of the comments that have come in from the public. So, you have a chance to read this. I encourage you to read through all of the stuff on here. There's a lot there, a lot more than just a map. But we'll send you all the comments as well. But some of the comments have been, you know, "We don't want all of the traffic to just hurry past Parawan." "We want it to go through and give businesses opportunity and so forth." There will come a time in the future, is it ten years or is it forty years, when the traffic going down through to Center and Main and back up will cr- start to create problems. It's just- it's- that's what traffic congestion will do. At some point in the future, we're gonna need other options other than funneling them all down Main Street. And that's why the argument is to leave it on the plan, even if it doesn't mean we're gonna do anything now. In fact, we've been trying to figure out for a while how to close two hundred. And that could still be a short-term option if we wanted to consider it. But sooner or later, it will need to go through. There's just not a lot of other options to get that traffic up the canyon without going through our town. It's just the nature of that bottleneck at the mouth of the canyon, completely surrounded by mountains that are BLM and so forth. It's- sooner or later, we're gonna not want the traffic, 'cause it'll start to impact businesses in a negative way. And the next thing you know, you have the whole debate about when we have to put in a stoplight. And then, somebody gets hit and killed in an intersection because, um, traffic congestion where we have all the walking going on and crossing the street. So, again, the argument from the professionals, UDOT has the same opinion. They're not here tonight, but they have the same opinion. Leave that there. At some point, you can give two hundred south over to UDOT and we'll change that designation. But we're in the driver's seat as to when that happens, but the argument is to leave it there and at least let people know that are buying and- and building and that live there, at some point in the future, it will get put. So, that's just c- some of the conversation that's gone on, but it's a difficult- it's a difficult thing. That's where most of the traffic goes today anyways, and unless we choose to force them around. But we're gonna have to get pretty creative in closing roads like two hundred and three hundred there by the park. It's about the only way we can get them to stop, and even then, they'd probably go through the neighborhood, at least till they retrain themselves. And eventually, we're- you'll get to a point where now all of a sudden, that's causing problems where we force them to go, so. Anyways, just food for thought. I just wanna give you some input, what's happened. You can read the comments that have come in. I- I- I know that there's people that feel strongly about two hundred, so anyways. You want me to pull the map and show you the old one?
I mean, I just wonder in the last twenty-two years if anyone came to council and said, "I don't like that two hundred going through, 'cause it's been sitting there like this for all these years." And I know we've tried to divert the traffic down Main, and it's really great to get people to go down Main, but we're hitting, you know, La Via, the beauty shop, the library, uh, the liquor store, the bike shop, the magic shop. It's not like they're going down our Main Street. They're still turning at Center. And we still continue to evaluate that as the most concerning intersection. We actually have another meeting with UDOT with some new information as they continue to dissect our data that they did in their traffic study. That meeting's on the fifth, to talk about Center and Main and Main and two hundred. We're still trying to figure out the best solution for those. And even the other day, I said, "What if we just block off two hundred like we talked about?" And we- so, people know it's still on the plan, but people can't use it. And you have the concern of them shooting over to three hundred or going across the front of the pool and then still having that kinda weird intersection where you've gotta really dip your nose out and like, if people are coming fast down off the canyon, which they tend to do. Um, I mean, it's just, it's not an easy problem, and that's why we just- we keep talking about it. But it's not like it's only been being talked about since this plan. It's been on our plan all these years. And I- in my mind's eye, I just see cars stacked all the way down to the schools. Um, and then the people that tend to cross at the drugstore, you know, to the cafe, and that's where a lot of the jaywalking is. We've been talking about a mid-block crossing there. Um, they'd be doing that in between cars. I think that's gonna be a hard habit to break, even with traffic. And, I mean, it's fun to- i- it's fun, that's a weird word, but interesting when the fair comes into town and that traffic is- two hundred is blocked, and you get to kinda see what that looks like and how that could function. Because right now, our traffic counts don't really give us models, and we can have models created. It costs a lot of money, but to show, you know, potentially what it looks like is fine passes. But when we have these events in our town, you know, instead of just going, "Ah," you know, kinda sit back and watch. I mean, I have a great vantage point at my house to kinda see what this could look like. And then, think about that in- as that traffic picks up and- and come with solutions. I mean, I have people send me texts and emails and- and come in and wanna talk, and they wanna put in a stoplight, or they wanna put in a stop sign, or, you know, all these different things. Roundabout, which, you know, I think people are starting to warm a little bit more up to roundabouts than they used to. But, I mean, this is just keeping it there so those property owners know, "Hey, this is in the realm of possibility at some time in the future." If we take it off, then it doesn't preserve that like we need it to, just in case. Not know if that helps you.
One more thing before we leave this topic and to add to what the mayor was saying. Um, is this concerning intersection at Center and three- uh, yeah, Center and three hundred? Just- just for giggles, look and see what they did back in two thousand and two. They were entertaining the idea of basically cutting through the park and to come into a T intersection right there. This has been an issue for s- for quite a while. Um, one of my thoughts is, while it is still a UDOT road for who knows how long in the foreseeable future, um, and we've talked to UDOT about helping us improve that intersection there while it's a UDOT-designated road, and we can get UDOT funding for it. And then, at some point, when two hundred becomes the UDOT-designated road all the way through, then they can help facilitate that when that comes. But in the meantime, we can get some funding to improve three hundred east and one forty-three. Um, but no, we're not still considering what they were gonna do there. If anything, we're- we're spitballing some more creative stuff like a roundabout or something here. That intersection is w- in my mind, we have three big problem intersections. Center and Main, obviously, two hundred and Main, obviously, and that one at three hundred and- and Center. You get more traffic going up the canyon, um, potentially, if we have a subdivision on the east side of town, that intersection's gonna start getting pressure.
Well, there is, uh, quite the ice problem right there.
Ice problem.
Coming from three hundred, you know, uh, up to Center Street from where the shop is, it's bad.
Really?
You- the cars get stuck, slide off. If they don't plow, I- I'll sometimes sit with my plow just 'cause it gets nasty.
'Cause UDOT's doing plowing of their road, and then we're doing a different coordinating plowing of our road.
It's pretty bad right there.
Okay, Kelly, I'm switching back.
Awesome. Well, I don't wanna take your whole night. Is there any other questions before we move through those other maps really quick? Alrighty. So, the rest of these maps, a lot of them are for information for use of the city throughout their planning efforts, right? So, we have a roadway surface type map. That tells you, let's load here, whether the road is paved, dirt, or gravel. Pretty simple there. Um, this average daily traffic. We conducted traffic counts as part of this master plan on roads that we selected with the city. Um, so, these points, they're color-coded for average daily traffic that goes by, right, ADT. If you click on any of these points, you can get some more information. You can get the average daily traffic, some speed information, and these class percentages tell you the type of vehicle, whether it's a car, a semi, a double semi, a motorcycle.
Cool.
So.
Getting funding for this was a big deal. That's why it's like, when we're presenting it, we're hearing it, so I feel like there's pushback. But this is a- this has been a big project for everyone involved, and it's something that really needed to be done. And when you look at then the data that we now have at our fingertips, it gives us a lot of- it gives us a tool for pursuing some of these projects. Like, prior to this, we didn't have anything really much to work with to pursue funding for some of these improvements. And so, every step of the way, I mean, the fact that we were able to get the accurate traffic counts, and then now we have this working model. And this is- is it real-time on this? 'Cause I've- I've heard that we have traffic counters on our highway all the time. We've got traffic counters near our exits all the time. It's just a matter of requesting the data. Is that true?
Yeah, so, UDOT has run continual counts throughout their year on some of their roads. So, all these dots that we conducted, obviously, won't be, but UDOT data is continually updating. And so, those numbers can- you can pull up- you can look on their map. We don't have it in here to update for their freeway counts or anything, but... And then, we also hold information on s- crash data. So, this heat map here kinda shows you where hotspots are for crashes. So, it makes a lot of sense that you have all these crashes along the freeway, right? But this is just more for informational to understand, um, and this only shows reported crashes. So, if there are unreported crashes, like, or wildlife, um, issues that weren't reported, um, they won't show up on this map, but kinda gives you an idea, say, like, intersections specifically that might- you might wanna take a second look at. Uh, and then, an active transportation map was created by Bike Utah. Parawan City did a project with them to lay out active transportation, meaning sidewalks, bike paths, um, painted bike lanes on roads, basically anything that would help, um, is it gonna show up here? Maybe we have to have Ted fix that. Um, well, it'll- it'll show. We'll get that fixed as soon as possible. But it- it shows that plan that was created by Bike Utah of where we would like those paths to be. And these last two maps, as part of this plan, we projected some potential projects for Parawan City, some transportation improvement projects. Uh, this one's- is that one not showing up on yours either? Are they all gone now? Wonder what happened? Oh, now they're all gone. We were just looking at this one.
Yeah, you have to come back now.
All the web developer here.
Anyway, (laugh) so, these will show you. It'll have lines of the road segments that we... Oh, is it? Try it one more time. This is showing up. Oh, there we go. So, these, if you click on them, so we talked a little bit about this intersection, um, it'll tell you a little bit of the project description of what we were planning to do on that segment. We provided a c- rough cost estimate, and then, based on the year that we anticipated it would be constructed, you have a future cost based on inflation. And this is estimated using UDOT's inflation, um, parameters that they use for estimating their projects. So, the short-range plan is projects that are anticipated to be constructed in the next zero to ten years. That being said, it usually takes longer to acquire funding to get these done. But having them on the plan is important in case priorities change. If you wanna do this project before another one, or if a funding source becomes available that allows you to pursue one project versus another, having it on this plan is really important in- in acquiring funding through those sources. So, that's my overview of the plan. Is there anything anyone wanted to look at or had any questions about?
I do have on my agenda a note that is, uh, having a discussion with the council about having a public hearing about this master plan, now that it's finalized, this transportation master plan. Um, if the council would like to have that, we'd get that scheduled at our next meeting.
And we can- we can either- it's- it's not explicitly required, but we can. And I think it'd be appropriate to have a public hearing, even though there has been one at Planning Commission. I think it'd be a good- good idea on something that's this big to have another one. But we could- we could have- we could schedule the action immediately after it. Or if you want, we could have a public hearing next time and then action the following one, or if you wanna do them both next time, just how you guys wanna do it. We wanted to give you time to read through it. Um, everything is updated on there. Um, if you want a physical copy, we can print it off. We have to cut down a tree to do it because it's pretty thick, but, um, we wanna give you time to look through it.
So, we don't need to vote, but just kind of a consensus on, would you like to do them both in the same meeting, the next meeting? Or would you like to do them separate- two separate meetings with time in between to think about the public comment? It really is up to the council and your comfortability with where you're at with it and what the feedback you receive from the people that you interact with and having time to be able to hear even more. This was already open for how many days for public comment that we have all the n- the notes on? Was it thirty or sixty? This was already open for how many days for public comment that we have all the, the notes on? Was it thirty or sixty?
I think you do it all in one.
I, I don't have a (cough) doing it all at one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can put those both on the agenda next council meeting. That would be August eighth.
The only thing I would say is, um, prior to the next meeting, if we're gonna adopt it next meeting, if the council can have all their comments back to us the week before the council, just so we can incorporate those prior to adoption, so.
So if it's easiest, I can send a link to this website that has all the information and the date of when we would like to have comments by and how you submit those. I can send them to Kelly or Dan and they can forward it on. What's?
So I guess what McLean's saying though, let me, let me, don't put words in your mouth. But if, if after the public hearing you want to a- tweak or adjust things, then you need to give them time to update it.
Okay.
Before you're officially adopted.
Yeah, so if we need to change anything after the public hearing, then we table the adoption number for the next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So it'll, it'll depend on response if we have people here.
Yes.
Okay.
If you don't, then you just adopt it.
So I don't know if I need to ask each individual member of the council, do you like the one step or the two steps?
Well, I think the one step would be fine and we can just play it by ear by the number of public comments we've, we've gotten. And then we can table it for that night and put it on for the next, the next meeting. I mean, you kind of fly.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
Doing it that way. Councilmember Burton?
No, I think that'll give the public a chance. I think that's fine.
Okay, alright. That's the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right, moving now to item number thirteen. This is the industrial park master plan presentation. This is that block around the airport that we waited for McLean to present. And just to be clear, this is a separate project completely that Jones and DeMille is doing for us. So I don't know if, Dan, you wanted to introduce it, or McLean, you're comfortable introducing the project?
Yeah, maybe, Dan, if you can talk about the funding.
I was just gonna let you, okay, I'll talk about the funding and I'm gonna let McLean.
Then I can go for it.
Okay. So we got a grant, everybody knows, hopefully you remember, we got a grant, Economic Development Committee put in on it. And this was a rural, rural communities group, uh, Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. Um, the idea is that this grant, we would get, we would do an industrial park master plan. This is not an official part of our general plan. This is just a plan for the park, um, including cost estimates and a, some design for roads and utilities so that we can essentially use as two things. One is a, as a PR thing, we can go out and, and we can basically say, look what we have. This is space that we have in town in case a company is interested. A lot of times, people that are interested or companies that are interested in building, they wanna have an idea of how prepared the city is. Um, and if, if they're gonna wanna locate their business there. And, um, this is something that we can take and we can give to companies that are interested in moving in and doing something in the industrial park area. Um, the second thing that it does is it gives us a document that we can use to go after grant money. We've been trying to get the airport road loop done and paid for. When we went after a grant before, we did not have any really good documentation. We didn't have any good cost estimates. We didn't have a route. This will give us all of that stuff so that we can really go after some grant funding to try and get that done. So it's official in that it's a plan. It's not official to the degree that it's adopted in our general plan. And so we did get a grant from the state and, um, we hired Jones and DeMille to go and do that. We spent a lot, we've done a lot of work with them as they've come up with that and working on that. McLean?
I'm ready.
There you go.
Thank you. Uh, first off, thank you for, uh, letting us work with you. We really appreciate Mayor and Dan and all of the council, as well as the Planning Commission. Um, especially on the (cough) the transportation master plan. They've been really good to work with, um, and we're grateful for the public comment that we've received. Um, a lot of times, public comment can be looked at as a negative. Um, but I literally traveled four hours to a public involvement meeting last week and nobody showed up. So we really appreciate when the public is involved and when the public has something to say rather than us just show up with no comments. So we appreciate that. Um, do you mind switching the screen for me? You, you're good. Okay, so just to get started, um, on the process for this, uh, plan itself. We went in and we did survey and surveyed property corners, basically, to give us a parcel map. Uh, we used the parcel map from the county, inputted the deeds for the property owners that we've, um, been working with through this plan um, to come up with a good way to route roads that aren't going to negatively impact the property owners but, that are gonna enable, um, uh, I guess, potential, um, developers to come in and, and bring business to Parawan, which will then bring rev- tax revenue to the city. Um, so you can kinda see, uh, this is just an overall map, um, that we've put together. You can see up here on the screen, we started over here, there's a gas station that's gonna be going, is the gas station, right? On the west side. On the west side of Main, there's a gas station going in. Um, we lined that intersection up with what they're going to be doing. Um, and then bring it across and away from the highway so that we have enough storage capacity for trucks to be able to turn left if they need to or right onto, onto the highway. And then same thing going left towards the industrial area. We, we brought the road around the airport. This is that gravel pit. This portion of the road is super tight because that gravel pit falls down so close to the road. Um, it is super tight, but we shifted it and made this pavement wide enough that the trucks can make that turn. We then brought this up, Goodfellow, uh, Incorporated is putting, um, a, I don't know if it's a headquarters or some type of operation out here. Um, they built this road with gravel already, so we just went and surveyed the center line of that road that they built and then basically followed that alignment. Um, it's not a deeded road yet because I think it's just built on city property. But when these parcels develop, whether that's with the airport or, or somebody else coming in on the south side of that road, um, that's when the deed would happen to the city and the properties would then be owned by either Parawan City or somebody else. And then private pro- (cough) properties are all on the north side of this, um, that road. So we specifically studied how to lay out these roads. Basically, the bulk of the study was for, uh, can you see my mouse, okay? Everybody?
This one?
So the, the road basically wraps around the airport, comes up. And the bulk of the study was simply to loop this road through and come back to the SR two seventy one. So that's what the cost estimate's for. We did not do cost estimating for north of this parcel, or, sorry, north of the road. We simply made the loop and then if people wanna develop, they can build roads off of that later on. Um, same thing with this one, east of that intersection. We did not incorporate, we didn't do a cost estimate for that. And you're gonna get some sticker shock when I show you this estimate here in a second.
I know, I'm ready for it.
I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready. No sticker shock.
So we then brought this road south to the intersection of two seventy one. Um, I believe the city owns all of these parcels along the airport. Is that correct?
Yep.
On the south side of the airport. Um, we put one acre lots in there with shared accesses that I'll show here in a second. Um, basically to enable some development along the two seventy one corridor. Um, so that's a high level overview of that. Any questions so far?
So you can do that with, that close to the airport? Like, close to the runway?
Well, this is a good segue. Not a segue, just a good rabbit hole which we'll come back from and turn the back, time back over.
Deal.
We also have our airport master plan. That is a very important document that is approved by the FAA. And on that plan, it has future properties that will be a part of the airport. Um, and that's important designation with the FAA. Our current plan, which we, which this year, this budget year, we're going to be updating that plan. Um, and we have had McLean's group with Jones and DeMille, um, have some interaction with, um, Judd Hill, with Armstrong.
Not Armstrong anymore.
It's not Armstrong anymore. It's now Lochner Group. They will be working on updating our airport master plan. One of the things we're doing is we're, uh, the old plan for the airport was to upgrade it from a general commercial to a full business commercial airport. Um, that idea has been abandoned by the city council and by the airport board. We now just want to improve it fully as a Class B airport, not, not change its classification. One of the reasons the land alongside the airport that he referred to there, under the plan to enhance the airport to a commercial, that property would have to be part of the airport. When we leave it alone and we don't upgrade the airport, that part of the airport will no longer be part of the airport. It's now a space of land that the city will own next to the road that will not have airport, um, inter- interactivity at all. The fence will be in the back of it, but we could utilize that as industrial park property, which we own. We could do a pr- private part, public partnership. We could do, we could lease it. It actually gives us some really good potential options for some revenue that could come in. As we know, the airport doesn't make us money in the strict sense of the, the way right now. So we're looking to take it so the airport is at least neutral for the general fund, right? Right now, we subsidize it. That's one way we could do that. And we've talked about that. Designated as part of this plan, if we can get utilities improved all the way around the airport, water, sewer, um, power and roads, then, then not only does it open up some opportunities to have businesses come in, but it actually enhances the city-owned properties as well. So that's what I gotta say about that. So yes, as of right now, it's part of the airport. As we reclassify the airport, it won't be. Okay.
Any other questions so far? I'll try and make this quick. Um, so we actually made a full plan set. So typically, we, with a plan, we don't go this deep into detail. But in order to get an accurate estimate of what the cost is gonna be, we actually pulled lidar data, a surface, basically to model the road in there to see what it looks like. We calculated all the quantities that you're gonna see. So it's gonna be pretty dang close to what your construction cost is gonna be. Um, I'm just gonna scroll through these sheets 'cause those are just summary sheets. Um, I'm gonna scroll through tha- that for now.
Don't scroll. Those look very interesting. Go back to the very first.
(laugh) So we have, this is the entrance right off of Main Street. Uh, we've got a twelve foot lane. Let me see if I can do that. So we have a twelve foot lane coming, uh, for a right hand turn, a twelve foot lane for a left hand turn. Or, uh, one of them will be a left hand turn with a straight. And then a receiving lane till you get to this point. This then com- ties in to that new road that we have on the master plan, maybe. (laugh)
The website.
We pulled this up a lot, so, okay, so this road that we're, we're talking about, instead of bringing this in at, at an angle, this would come down. And this road would then connect in. So what I had shown there on that sheet was coming off of Main, running south, connecting into that road that is planned but not part of this plan. Any questions there? Scrolling through, we wrap around, uh, the airport itself. We then wrap around the pit. You can see the top of that pit there. We wrap around that. We come up to the intersection that Goodfellow has put in and come, run east along what we call Industrial Park Road. We run east, we create a little intersection for a future intersection. And we run the water line, stub the water line out of the road so if we pave it, we're not having to rip the road up later on. Um, same thing here with this intersection, bringing it all the way east and running north. And then this is that four-way intersection, um, before you come down to two seventy one. So we have water lines stubbed out all directions so that there's future connections that can be made without ripping up the asphalt that is being put in. And then this is the connection to two, two seventy one. I'm not gonna go into a lot of detail on those. Um, and then these are all those lots that I talked about that are south of the airport. Um, so we're just showing those lots with the shared access, so one access per two lots. Um, so talking high level, let's go back up here to our overall drawing. So we have the layout of all the roads. Um, within the cost estimate that we've included, we've included water, uh, electric, the roadway, and all of the, all of the asphalt, granular bar, all things like that. So here's your sticker shock moment. Um...
I guessed three million, but I haven't seen this number. What is it? Nine million.
I was gonna say nine.
Oh, but I was just thinking the road. How much for just the road?
Oh, probably about three for the road.
No, I was just thinking the road. No, I know the utilities would cost a lot more than that.
So just the electric itself, so we worked with Jeremy, the tower superintendent. Um, just the electrical wire itself is about a million. Um, and then your three inch conduit, you have three three inch conduits right next to each other. That's about another seven hundred fifty grand. So just the electric is almost two million of that. Um, and then you have your water lines. You have a twelve inch water line running around that loop um, with eight inch service lines branching off of that. And just that water line alone is about two point two million. And then your road is another three with a bunch of miscellaneous signage, all that stuff included in there as well.
How much road? Like, how many feet of road?
Um, that is a...
I'm trying to look.
I don't know off the top of my head.
How many?
Not many miles.
Oh, mile, miles of road.
I can tell you that. Hey, Devin, can you do some math with me really quick?
You don't have to. I, I was just, just curious.
My guess was about two.
So two miles of road is three million dollars.
Yeah, that's insane.
Oh, I would've thought that would've been more.
So the, the...
Heavy haul, right?
The reason why it is that way is because we have it wider so that...
A million a mile.
So we have twelve foot lanes with three foot shoulders and a center turn lane. So if you have trucks pulling into those industrial sites, they're not blocking off traffic from going both directions. So this is like a, a, the dream situation, right? Like ideally, this is how the, the industrial park would be built. If we need to scale it back when we go to funding, you can scale this back. Maybe do twenty-four foot of pavement at the beginning. And then if you get more funding, you continue to increase that, um, asphalt width. And so I understand that nine million is gonna be a lot of money to go ask for. But you can ask for this in chunks as well. So we could split this in a twenty-four foot wide road all the way through to get you started. Um, but the hard part is, if you're wanting to put the utilities in, you have to put all of them in at once. The only thing you can really scale back is the roadway width, so.
So you couldn't do a developer pays per project or they would be, so the developer would not be able to participate, they, in, on the front end? They would be on the back end?
Um, the developer, uh, on the lots themselves or, well, typically, the way I've seen it is the city would go get funding to put in the main line. And then they could, when they develop next to that road, you can make them widen that, the asphalt on their side. The hard part is the developer doesn't come in, they don't all come in at once.
Right.
So, but that's how you can make that work. Um, any other questions as far as this study goes? Okay. Um, so I think, Dan, you can probably speak to this, the next steps on this. We're gonna finalize this plan, finalize the cost estimate. We may need to have a discussion on... We may need to have a discussion on splitting out some, like, smaller chunks versus the full thing, um, between Dan Meyer and whoever else wants to be involved. And then, then the city's gonna go look for funding for this later on.
So, we're gonna have them present the final thing, um, to economic development and be done with it. Again, this is not a, this is not a document that is a controlling document. This will be the last time we touch it as the city council. Um, we're gonna, our goal has been to wrap this up so that we can finish the funding, so that we can apply for that same source of funding for another project. So, basically, they'll finish anything that needs to be done. We'll wrap it up with Economic Development, which is who, um, initiated this and, and wanted to, to look at this, and then we're kinda done with it. So. Not really much more to take action on, um, from the city council's perspective, um, but-
What's that other project? You said it's hinged on this.
No, there isn't another project hinged. There is, we would like to apply.
No, you said this is another project that you're gonna apply for.
We don't, we haven't even identified what the next project or the next grant.
Oh, you're just saying this can ringboard.
Here's the deal. We can't apply again for this grant until this project is done. So, the next Economic Development Committee, we've gotta, we've gotta figure out what we wanna do and what we wanna apply for. But until this, while this is, until this is a hundred percent, we can't even apply. They won't let you have two projects going. So, if you have an idea of what, and, and, and in thi- this grant has restrictions of what can be done with it, and they're very particular.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Collette Cox with the governor's office is really, um, helpful in helping us come up with ideas. Um, and this was just something that we figured would actually be very helpful for the city to have in our pocket so that we could use, so that we can go after grants. Um, but what is the next thing we wanna go after for an economic, economic development perspective from that rural communities grant source? We have to apply in, like, August, September. They wanna have, they wanna know what we're doing. But we couldn't even start until this got done. So, that's why we've been trying to really kind of hurry through this process. But that's where we're at. And you're welcome to have any ideas that you have, and we could explore those. But that's what Dave gets to do in Economic Development, right, Dave? Sorry, Councilman Harris?
This was really important to, I mean, we've had an industrial area I've known about since I moved here twenty-one years ago, but then there isn't anything there. (laugh) So, we at least have a, a good plan. And I don't feel like it's been rushed. I think it's just been very, we've approached it pretty economically and been able to make the decisions along the way that I think made sense. And, I mean, ideally, yeah, if we could get that airport road through, it makes a lot of sense to be able to do that. We get a lot of complaints about that road. I don't think it was ever intended to be a permanent road. Um, and it isn't really gonna serve what we need it to do anymore. But we've gotta at least get the ball rolling on some direction here. So, I'm encouraged with what you've done. Thank you.
All right. Moving now to this next item. It is the ordinance to rename seven fifty North to eight hundred North.
Okay, I'm gonna seize control. Don't you love that I installed an A B switch and we don't have to go back and forth with a cord anymore? Okay, so, um, this is a work item. It will come back as an ordinance to vote on, um, next time. I'm just, um, showing you the, uh, what happened. So, this area of town is right on the North Interchange. In fact, you can see right here, it says Interstate fifteen. This is the off-ramp on the North Interchange, and this is where it ties into Main Street. This was actually a plat that was put together by Bullock Brothers, um, back in two thousand six. The project actually started, I believe, in two thousand four, and they had a street which intersected or bisected this property, and it was, it was approximately in this area. And they called it eight hundred and fifty North. Um, come to find out, UDOT would not allow them access that far north or that close to the interchange. It, it was too far north of what they call their no-access line. So, this is back in Joe Melling days.
What's it called?
The no-access line.
Oh, okay.
And so, UDOT said th- th- that they needed to move it farther to the south. And so, they did this plat that we're looking at. This wasn't a subdivision. This was a road dedication plat, which was part of a subdivision process. It's just that the subdivision process was never completed. The road dedication was. And when we started this process a year and a half ago, as Terrible's was looking to acquire one of these lots, they asked about this road. And, um, in fact, you could see on this plat, the old, see these two points right up here? That's where it used to be. So, when the road dedication was amended, which is what we're looking at here, this is the road dedication amended in two thousand six, they named this road seven fifty North. It was eight fifty North. It moved like a hundred feet and became seven fifty North. I don't know why they chose that road, but if you actually look at our grid layout, um, it is considerably north of seven hundred, and to name it seven fifty North is not really consistent with our spacing, right? Not that big of a deal, but before there's development, before we started signing addresses, it, it really, in order to kinda be consistent with our spacing, needed to be eight hundred North instead of seven, instead of seven fifty. Not that big of a deal, but if we, but someday, as it goes east, sorry, and north is to the left, as it goes east and as it goes west, that seven fifty North will actually be kinda problematic as far as the layout. So, I, I, we had to assign an address for the Terrible's building permit, and they said, what is the street that it's on? And I said, that's not supposed to be seven fifty. It's supposed to be eight hundred. And I called the cu- the county recorder, and she said, you have to amend it by ordinance. And then it'll override the plat that's been recorded. This is actually, um, still, this subdivision has never been completed. Um, it has been, there has been a parcel boundary realignment. If you remember, there was a, there was this parcel that was here. That's been realigned to, to create this parcel. These are not, this is not a subdivision. Sometime in the near future, the owner of this land will come in and want to finish this commercial subdivision. We will make him go through that subdivision process. In the meantime, this is a parcel that is next to Main Street, and it is on this street. And they have been given a building permit to improve this, to improve this parcel. Um, and so, all we're doing tonight is we're basically, by ordinance, changing that seven fifty to an eight hundred so that we can assign an address, um, if you- Sorry, they-
Bring it back?
We're just gonna bring it, yeah, it'll just come up for an ordinance next week, and we'll amend it.
Okay.
Um, and then you, and we're not impacting anybody's address. There's no, anything.
That's what I was gonna, I don't think there's any-
This is what I would define as housekeeping. It just has to be done by ordinance. So, wanted to give you the backstory on it.
Okay, let's do it. Does council have any other questions about that item?
No, I think that's already straightforward.
Right. Thank you. The next item is sixteen, the police trucks discussion. The police can walk. Like, I don't feel like they need trucks, guys.
Yeah, horses.
Horses. Let's bring back the horses.
Hey, horses, policemen on horses, they get a lot of respect around New York City. I'm serious. You should go. It's pretty cool.
I was gonna make a comment, but it's not appropriate for right here, so I'll do it later. (laugh)
So, I apologize. I actually had, um, this might be ironic, or not ironic, but-
Not, not good humor, especially not today.
Not in good humor. Um, I've lost my document due to a power outage that I had prepared for this meeting.
Hmm.
So, um, it's, it's a sensitive subject at the moment. But let me summarize, and we have-
Google Doc?
We have Addison here. No, I do everything on, on ex, on Microsoft, and, and my document had not updated by the time it was tossed. Um, but this is where we're at. We have six police trucks that are on lease right now. Um, we have a significant amount of equity in those trucks. I'm defining that by they have given us the amount of buyback cost for those trucks. If we wanna buy them out, they are at the end of their life. They're not all on the exact same timeframe. But, um, two of them, we have to renew the lease in August, four of them. And the others, we have to renew the lease in November. So, and our intent was to extend those leases. However, we need to make a decision as to whether to buy them back at some point. And, um, Addie and I have talked a lot about that. One of the, one of the awesome advantages that we have to doing the lease program is, is we have a nice, stable payment. We're not up and down every year, kinda crazy. Um, one of the disadvantages of the lease program is that we have to fully outfit six vehicles all at the same time, which is a lot of work. It, it's running them back and forth to Salt Lake. It's not having, um, police trucks. You're playing musical trucks. It's kind of a pain to do it. So, we've discussed what our approach is. One of the things that I wanna propose us not doing is just turning these vehicles back, um, because the price that they have given us to buy them out is far less than what they are intrinsically worth. And that's how I'm defining the equity that we have in them. So, if, what, what I've talked with Addie is, and they will allow us to extend the vehicles another year on the lease. Um, what I would like to do is to buy two of them and extend the other four. And next year, do a new lease on those two that we just bought. We wanna have them all on a lease, but we wanna buy them out. We just don't wanna do it all at once because it will cost us a lot of money. That allows us to take advantage of the equity that we have in the vehicles, but we do need to replace them. In other words, buying them out does not solve our problem either because they're, they're getting aged. They're getting up there in miles, and on a police vehicle, if it has a hundred thousand miles on it, it's got two hundred to two hundred and fifty, um, miles in equivalent runtime because they're, they idle them. They don't turn them off because of all the electronics and so forth. So, these engines have a lot more time on them than the odometer would tell you. Not to mention, they drive them hard when they're in pursuit mode, which isn't a lot. Um, but, so the idea is, and I've, and this is what I don't have on my document, is if we buy two of them this year, lease two more to replace those next year, we can keep one and sell one, take advantage of the equity, keep one truck, which we can bring into the fleet for parks or something else, 'cause we've got some pretty aged vehicles for some of those. Next year, buy two more of them at that point and get a new lease on those two to replace them. We could buy one and sell one, or keep one and sell one, and then the following year, we would do it with the final two of the six. That would put us on a cycle where every two years, or every year, we're replacing two vehicles. They're coming off the lease, and depending on what, how much equity we have, we either buy them back or we let them go. But we're only replacing two trucks a year rather than six trucks every four years. Um, this also gives us an opportunity to bring some, I mean, an eighty thousand mile truck, um, is, to put that into a parks truck to drive around town, that's, that's a really good truck for parks, right? Um, for police, where you need to have that truck have no possibility of breaking down in the middle of some sort of emergency action, eighty thousand miles is about on the top end of how, where we wanna keep it, right? So, this kind of lets us take advantage of all of that stuff. I can bring the numbers to you, but we do need to make a decision on renewing the leases right now. Um, we did not budget. We discussed it at budget time, but we didn't really have a plan for what we all wanna do. So. Chief, you wanna come up and address anything that I said? Tell them where I was severely wrong.
So, so that's what you wanna do? That's, okay.
Um, we did have a turnover in ownership of the lease company, and for a minute, we were panicking 'cause they said, we're not doing it anymore. We're done. We're out. And that's what I was talking to you guys at budget time. We weren't, we weren't really sure what our options were gonna be. Since budget time, these guys have figured out what they're doing. They figured out their own financing that the lease company itself has on the back end, and they've said, yes, we will allow you to extend these leases if you would like to. And, um, also, this is the price that you can buy them back at. And when I saw that number, I was like, we would be dumb to not acquire these trucks. I mean, like, I'm talking like ten thousand dollars a truck in equity.
Oh, wow. Oh. So, we'll buy two back now, renew the other four on a lease, and then the following year, we would do-
And next year, we will get a, we'll get, we'll, we'll get two leases and then take those out of the fleet. So, we'd keep all six trucks in the fleet until next budget year. It's just that we'll only extend the lease on four, and we'll pay for two.
Okay.
And then next year, we'll lease those two, we'll lease trucks to replace those two.
Okay.
The other thing, it's not just the truck itself. It's all the hardware in the truck, from the radars to the laptops to the cages to all that stuff, the light bars. They get to their, they get to an end of life where they start themselves having issues. And so, sometimes you're lucky enough to be able to transfer a cage from one truck to the next. Usually, they change the model enough in four or five years that you can't. And we do wanna have new electronics every once in a while anyway. So, this kind of fits into the life cycle of the electronics as well.
Do we have money in the budget for that?
We're gonna need to amend the budget. We have money to make a lease payment on six trucks. So, four of those will be just fine. The two that we will buy out, we won't have to make the lease payment, but we'll have to make the purchase.
Purchase.
And the purchase is gonna be slightly more than the lease payment. So, we'll need to amend the budget to allow for that. And I modeled it out over six years, the slight ups and downs as we do this plan, and it's, on average, about the same as just making payments. Um, and it does get us into a two-year cycle. Um, I'm sorry, a three-year cycle of replacing two vehicles a year. So. I had it on a graph, and I was gonna show you that, but-
That, we can just keep going with this once we get it-
I think this is a good plan. But, um, we can bring it to you and go over it, and you can vote on it. But we just wanted to have the discussion of this is kind of the route that we're looking to go, and we do need to extend leases at a bare minimum, um, in the next couple of months.
That's why I was gonna ask, when do we need to pull the plug?
It's August, or is it, it's the August that we have to, on the four. So, the first leases, we need to actually tell them what we're doing by next month. That's why we brought it up.
Those are the two that we would buy?
Yeah. Two we would buy, two we would extend the lease, and then two more we would extend the lease in November.
We just need this as an action item next meeting.
Yeah, and I'll, 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 I will have to reinvent what I did. It kinda, kinda sucks 'cause I spent some time on it, but I'll have to redo it. And I'll give some graphs and let you kinda see the cash flow throughout the next four or five years to see how it works out, but.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Moving now to item number seventeen. Um, we get to hear from a council member we don't hear from very often. So, if you, if you wonder-
Is that you?
A council member can bring an item to the agenda. If the second council member supports that, it comes to the agenda. And this is something we've been talking about for quite some time, just on and off in the background, because sometimes our meetings go so late, and we're in discussions on important issues very late into the evening. And so, this request was to talk about a time change to begin our city council meetings. And that request came from council member-
Harris.
Harris.
I just wanna move it to five thirty.
He's like, no drama. I just wanna move it to five thirty.
Just move it to five thirty. It's, I just don't see the point in starting at six. Get it, you know, in case nights are long and we can be done sooner. So. I just don't see the point in waiting till six.
Well, I just need to inject this. We ad- we addressed this with planning and zoning. We had an individual in the commission that had other obligations at six. So, we tried to move it to five o'clock, and it didn't work. He still couldn't make his obligations. But we had an issue with the public because your planning and zoning and your city council meetings are the two meetings which the public, um, are required at different times to attend for different reasons. And so, we had issues with the public being able to attend those meetings because of, you know, their daily activities and their work schedules and things. And so, we had to move it back to six. And, you know, I, we just had to address the, the issue that, uh, the, the, the meetings are, are to accommodate the public and not for our convenience. And that's the issue that we had to address. We could, we tried, and we did try five thirty, too. We could, we tried, and we did try five thirty too, and it didn't work.
Well, I can understand five being two, but most people are usually done by five and can make it to five thirty.
Well, I want to...
There's no reason why, if they're, what they have going on is more important than everybody else has going on either. They can, they, if, if it's that important for them to be here, they'll be here. When my employees have something they have to get to, they're more than welcome to it.
That's what we thought, Councilman Harris. But, we had, we did, we tried. And we had, we tried addressing that and adjusting. And we, you just have to realize that, I mean, yeah, you can say they gotta get here by five thirty, but, you know, people like to have a little time too. And anyway, we've been there, done that, and that's the experience of planning and zoning. And so, we, we tried, but those two meetings required the, the attendance of the public at different times for different reasons, more so than any other committee mem- meetings. So, those are the ones that are, we have to accommodate the public and, and not be concerned totally for our convenience.
Yeah, I, I can... Probably like, there's no five thirty.
Councilmember Downey. No, I'm gonna ask each coun- ask our legal if he has a conflict.
I don't, I do not have a problem with, I was on planning and zoning when we had the time change. And I personally did not see the issue that David has, Councilman Burton has brought up. I don't have a problem moving it up to five thirty.
Well, it wasn't for our convenience, it was for the public.
Well, I'm saying though, I didn't, I did not notice any issues...
There was, there was, Sharon, I'll just say that.
Councilmember...
Well, I, I would say, let's try it and see if there's any static out there with the public. I mean, we can always change it back, but five thirty, you know, I'm, I'm retired, so, I mean... Three o'clock's beautiful for me, but five thirty, you know, let's try it. You know, it's, um, it, it, uh... If we hear a lot of static, then, you know, our room isn't very full right now anyway.
Yeah, if it turns into some major headache, we can just take it back to...
Good point that he said, "Try it and see what the, the static or comments comes back."
Do you have anything else to add, Councilmember Harris?
Um, Harris, not Topham.
Go ahead, Topham.
Sorry, sometimes I like to take over. I don't mind trying it either. Um, I think though, that we do have to remember, we are here for the public and, like, if there is static and people aren't... I just want the public to know that they can be heard. So, like, public comments right at five thirty, if people can't be coming at five thirty for whatever reason, I don't want them to feel like they can't come because they can't voice their opinion because we already went through that, that portion of the agenda.
But, I don't... We could rearrange the agenda too. Like, we could do the administrative consent meeting portion, like where it is, and then, you know, maybe council member updates, as long as we kept them to a minimum. You know, just to kind of do those things that we don't tend to do.
The only problem I have with that is that your updates are for the public as much as the council.
So, one thought that I have is, um, don't skewer me for saying the county does it right. They have their meeting at ten in the morning. And they get a lot of grief about it.
And I hate that they do that too.
But, what, one of the things that they do is they have a, they have an administrative portion first, where they have their reports from department heads and stuff, which we're starting to do. We could do our reports from department heads at five thirty. Like, I hate re- making somebody stay late, um, if they're on the clock, if they need to, if we're requiring them to be here. So, we could do some of the stuff like that, like the administrative stuff at the first. So, that's the one comment. The other comment, and this is Callie's, um, point, that's right, I'm putting you on the spot, and it's a valid point. There are certain meetings, and the only one that comes to mind is if we do like a truth and taxation hearing, that the state code says that it has to be done after a certain time, and I believe it's six. So, there would be times that we may have to move it back to six for certain statutory requirements.
And that's understandable.
Callie, could I just ask the question? Is there anything in ordinance that you've seen that we need, have to start at six or a specified time? I mean, you have every other Thursday, second and fourth Thursday, but I don't, I couldn't see anything.
I don't think there's anything, um, not that I can think of right off the top. The only thing is that, is our notice of meetings that we put out at the first of the year and we say that we'll meet at six o'clock, that we're going, changing the time, and I don't see that as a problem.
So, does it pose a problem for staff to be at five thirty?
I don't think so.
So, that notice of meetings does say six. Is that right, Callie? Notice of meetings says six o'clock, okay.
Legal, so you have a problem of being here by five thirty? Does that pose a problem?
Stop and Miss Downey, don't yell. Thursday month meeting, one Thursday a month is the Utah Sheriff's meeting. They're usually done by two thirty or three. If they're over at, if our meeting's at five thirty and I'm trying to get here from Salt Lake or Vernal, I would never make it. I'm never going to Vernal again. But, if I were to go, sometimes I'm a little bit late, Thursday a month.
We'll give you grace.
But, I'm, I'll, I'll make it work. I have no objection.
I can be your driver, make sure you're here on time.
What a nice worker. And you can work while she drives. So, that would just be coming up then on the next agenda for vote. Moving now, teen reports, follow-up by elected officials and staff. We'll start with, looks like Rochelle, Councilmember Topham's ready.
I would love to start. I don't ever get to start. I always have to be last, but I always figured last is the best of all the game. Um, I don't have a ton, but, um, Shrek Junior started tonight and it goes through August third. And I believe you have to pay or get your tickets through the QR code. So, it's circulating or... There's some posters, "Take a picture, buy your ticket." Um, I've had several, we have to do what's called... Home visits, um, goodness better with, and a lot of the students from the elementary and are in this play and they're like, "Mrs. Topham, you have to come watch our play." So, I probably will be gracing that play a few times. And then, um, the school wanted me to ask about the gates for that one-way road. Are we going to have those in possibly by the time school starts?
Yep, we will have them in, but we did have a meeting last week, um, reiterated that... Um, so, and we act lines and go so we can, and we're fab... And we know when school starts and...
You do?
Yep.
Okay.
The day before is our hard, hard deadline on getting those done. And we, we met with, um, the chief was there, we had a security meeting with them as we do every year and talked about who was gonna be responsible for opening and shutting them when and all that. We have all the details figured out.
You've got it worked out, okay, okay. Fantastic, this is what I wanted to hear.
We're on it.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, that's great. Um, I missed, uh, power board, so I'm open sharing, went, so, other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you.
I just met with the, uh, pickleball group and, uh, we discussed, you know, what we discussed tonight. And then, uh, it was a great event last night. Lack of sleep because it ended about eleven o'clock, but, uh, the, uh, the pioneer show down at SUU was unbelievable. And, uh, it was a good one, so that was, I mean, it's the best, best fireworks show I've, I've ever seen and I've seen a lot, you know, down, you know, where I grew up at and stuff. This was the...
Coordinated with the music and the dancing, it was cool. And I, since you're on the subject, cause I was gonna say something if nobody did, why don't you talk about their mentions of Parma?
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Harris was asking whether that even happened.
It, uh, they, uh, I think it mentioned about eight times, so it was a beautiful thing. And pictures, and, uh, yeah, it was, uh, very impressive.
They showed a reenactment on the screen of the quilt walk. It was, it was cool.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm, you guys know me, I'm emotional sometimes. You'd think that I'm just this robot up here. It's, it's practice poker face, but I was moved.
Yeah.
Especially their depiction of the, the quilt walk. It was, it was really something.
Yeah, that, that was, and, and to be honest with you, that, that's first time I learned about the quilt walk, you know, just...
We assume people know the stories and, and they, the new people don't.
No.
And the younger people don't.
Yep.
So, it was, it was definitely...
It was, yeah. It was, it, it...
And it was a lot to do with Parma and the mother town and all that. And they did, they did highlight certain pioneer stories. Are they planning on highlighting different pioneer stories all the time?
I think so.
So, I would say that we oughta, you know, see if they're, how they are interested in finding out. They, they spent a lot of time talking about the Lund family. Um, Lund, who was here, he was involved in Parma, and he was in the, he was a clerk, then he was a this, then he was a state president, and then he was a, then he was the mayor of Cedar, and, and they, they had his progenitors there, um, sorry, his ancestors there. And, but I think they're gonna focus on different groups every year, so...
Do you wanna mention the, I mean, just because it's a good, do you wanna mention the cemetery expansion meeting?
Oh, yes, and that, that went very well.
Not expansion, but it's completion, I should say it that way.
It's completion, um, yeah, we discussed that and we have enough materials. Um, we're talking about, um, leaving the, the mopath, uh, about, uh, just because it'll be easier for the city crew to, to clean and stuff. And hopefully, we'll be moving forward on that pretty quickly. We, we are, uh, removing one very dead tree. It's a big tree right on the corner, um, soon. But, uh, besides that, I, it, it's, I think, um, I think we just, you know, going at least to the fence. We have a, we have product to go all the way to the end, the four hundred and ninety-one feet. But, uh, for now, um, going to the fence line and, uh, and that, that's a great, that'll be great. And then, other option, you know, we, we were talking and I'm sure we'll get some, uh, public comments, uh, about what can we put in that area? Um, if it's gonna be a reflection area, uh, it could be, you know, a, a mausoleum or, or things like that, so... Uh, what's, what's funny down there? Uh, well, there's bodies two doors down from me when they're digging the hole, so... It's, I think there's bodies all over here. Um, so, uh, yeah, so that, that's exciting, you know, cause they, you know, it's just, you know, looks so unfinished right now and we wanted to get it finished.
Thank you.
You bet. And, and then, also, sorry, you know, with, with the, uh, event last night, you know, they said, you know, the Lund family and stuff like that. I know Dave Burton or Councilman Burton's been here a long time, think, you know, you might have some good connections, you know, with the pioneers.
You're as if I was in the first company.
Well, you know, I mean, they're one generation away, but...
Councilmember Downey.
Um, Board of Adjustment met. Can I discuss that at all, Dan, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a public body.
The resident, a residence house that they bought was already into that twenty-five foot setback from the front of the property. And besides the house being in the twenty-five foot, they wanted to put a porch, would you call it, walkway?
An enclosed front porch.
Enclosed, they wanted to make, they also wanted to make a, uh, okay, it just went. They wanted, where the door was, they wanted to enclose that so they could put their boots and all that from the snow and that. And it was not up with our ordinances, so they didn't meet the qualifications with all the questions that you asked. So, it was denied. We had a power board meeting and, I don't wanna talk about power. We're doing a, a very minimal, I mean, we're not doing it, we're looking at a very minimal rate increase, but we are very aware of the power outages and so is the state. And I hope I, it was okay if I said that. So, things are being looked at with the power outages.
If it's okay with the council, so DJ Lobbe stayed here all night. And he's on a committee that I wanted to just introduce him if he want, would be willing to come up and...
Well, I did a good introduction to him.
You did, you actually did. Just, and he is, he's who, last I sent it to our board, that he wants three months' records of our power outages. Do you wanna just introduce yourself and talk about the committee that you're on with the governor's office?
And we just had another one today.
I mean, we're getting beat up out here. I don't know if the rest of the council gets emails and letters and usually it's people trying to, trying to help us and DJ's trying to help us too.
Yeah, so, anyway, uh, I don't live in Parma, I actually live out in the county, out, uh, past Paragona. Uh, I have a farm out there, but, anyway, um, so, I'm on the Committee for Consumer Services, uh, for the state of Utah. And that's, uh, an appointment from the governor's office. Um, basically, in a nutshell, what that committee does is any utility in the entire state wanna make a change of any type or, uh, do a rate increase, anything like that, we're the first committee to know about it and basically give the governors our initial reaction. We all, it's a pretty diverse group of us on it. Uh, we all have, uh, are on it because of different backgrounds we have, which qualifies to be on that committee. Uh, the, my qualifications for it are, I have a agriculture operation on Rocky Mountain Powers Grid. Um, so, anyway, um, I'm in a unique position to where I can put information in front of the right people that the, uh, bulk of the state may not be aware of. And all these power outages we're having, um, we're not alone in this area. It's actually happening all over the state. And without going into too much detail, um, there is a pattern to what areas are being the most effective or most affected by them. Uh, if I can say that. Um, so, understand there are some things I cannot say on this public meeting like this. But, um, but one of my jobs is to not only receive information, but to bring information to those meetings we meet four or five times a year as often as that the, uh, the committee feels is necessary or as things come down the pipe. Anyway, um, I have another meeting in September with this committee. Um, there's a lot of changes going on statewide with utility companies. And we're gonna be discussing those. And what I would like to bring to the meeting is stuff that's going on in this area and other areas around the state. So, one thing I would like to present to my committee is, um, the, basically, the frequency and the time and the ti- or, and the time of day that these outages are occurring. And kinda compile it all into a report with other areas of the state I'm looking at and present that to my department head and kinda get things moving to improve the situation from that angle, if that makes sense.
Can I ask you on those, you said you, you have a meeting four or five times depending on whatever. Are those meetings open to the public to attend?
Uh, so, they are open to the public, uh, but there are times during those meetings where we go into closed session. And then, at that point, the public is kicked out and we have a discussion on a certain topic. And then, after we're, uh, out of closed session, then the rest of, then the public can come back in. So, yes, the public is invited, but there are times when the public is kicked out.
And where are they held?
Uh, they're all, right now, they're all held up in Salt Lake, uh, in one of the government buildings up there, the Wells Building. Um, but, yeah, they, uh, do Zoom the calls or, uh, put the, uh, meetings up on Zoom and then the public itself can physically come in if they want. We've never had anybody from the public come into the meeting. We've had several representatives from different utility companies come in. But, yeah, technically, the public is allowed to be in there until we go into closed session, then they're kicked out.
Hey, if they need a, if they need a poster child for an entity that is being dramatically affected... Hey, if they need a, if they need a poster child for an entity that is being dramatically affected, would love to volunteer to be a poster child and, and give a, give a real world example. We're, we'll give you our data as well.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing I was gonna say is wh- what are we hoping, 'cause, 'cause, 'cause this is ultimately being caused by a, by a policy decision?
Yes.
At a private company, a private company that, that has to report to the Public Service Commission. So, is the goal that ultimately through this committee, the state can apply pressure through the Public Service Commission to this private agency, the, AKA Rocky Mountain, is that the goal?
So, uh, basically, uh, that's it. So, uh, you're, you're right, this is new policy by a private company that is being played as a blanket policy across multiple states. And the severity of the policy currently that's being implemented on us would be necessary in other states, but because of certain laws that are already in effect here in the state of Utah, they don't necessarily need to be that strict.
Well, we appreciate you reaching out to us because we've, you know, there's a point where you say, oh, is this the new normal? How does, what is this gonna look like? And then there's where people are in your face and saying, we're not a third world country and you need to do better and...
Right. I've had better power in third world countries, more reliable power.
So, I appreciate you saying I'm on this committee and I think I can help because, I mean, we're, we're brainstorming, do we create a backup power system? Do we, you know, we're, we're in these power, and I told DJ he could come to our power board meetings as well, you know, they're open to the public. But, like, we are being as resourceful as we can be, but we also recognize and were, was made clear, we're one customer, Parwin City is one customer.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we definitely just want to feel like we're doing our jobs and providing service to our community and not feel like we are just helpless.
Right, uh...
And, and we've debated whether to file an official complaint with the Public Service Commission. We do have a great relationship with our local...
Mm-hmm.
Rocky Mountain team and...
And I feel bad for the local Rocky Mountain party.
And they have, when they have an outage...
They're kinda just dealing with the fallout of all that.
And they're, they're hamstrung by their company's policies.
Mm-hmm.
They do, they work as fast as they can to do what they have to do to check all the boxes, to open the breakers back up.
Mm-hmm.
So, we don't wanna go crossways with our local company, but we would, we, we don't wanna just sit on our hands if there's something we can do.
Right, and like, and the, and what's going on is honestly a knee jerk reaction to what's going on in other states, and that's why this blanket policy's just been dumped company-wide. Um, but, the, uh, th- th- there is room to adjust and soften and s- around the areas, it doesn't need to be a big blanket thing, but it's just, like I said, putting the information in front of the right people to make these changes happen. And so, th- this does not become our new normal every summer or every winter even, so...
Well, we appreciate you helping and looking into this.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
It's a lot.
Thank you for staying for our meeting, too.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
And thank DJ, he helped us on the pool, too. He helped us rewire some stuff that was needed to get us into compliance.
Yep.
No, he didn't help us rewire, he helped us buy stuff cheap.
Well, I'm glad that was brought up because that legit, four people today, I'm getting hammered, and I'm sure all, every single one of you are getting hammered. And mine is, it's ruining my equipment at my shop with them just shutting it off like that. They're like, at some point, it's gonna destroy my equipment, what do I do? I'm like...
Well, it's not, it's not good for our air conditioners and all of that either in our homes.
I mean, yeah.
And our restaurants and our businesses, I mean...
Yeah, it is... It's just all around, and I know...
Restaurants have to close.
Yes, and I know we are all getting hammered, but just today, I felt so overwhelmed with all of the negativity. And I di- and I did not even read anything online today. I did not go to Facebook because of that. But it's like physical, actual complaints, so thank you for trying to help us do this because this is bigger than us and we don't know what to do either. So, we, I like the new, the, another avenue to look at it.
This is the first time I've gotten so many calls, too, like you did.
Yeah.
And what do we say, you know?
And I just say, I'm so sorry, like, there's, I don't know what to say, but it's very...
There isn't anything, we know about it, you know.
Very overwhelming.
Minor, how can we help you? This has to be horrible for you. (laugh) I'm like, yes, and I definitely need help, because again, we're putting our heads, we're doing everything we can for ourselves. We really are. I think we've been, we're kinda to the end of our rope of our resources, so thanks for bringing us some, some new ones. All right, was that all, Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Burton.
We've, (cough) we haven't had a water board meeting, which I think we need one, Dan, so, and then the Plan Zoning Mad, as you're aware of, but, but they did, uh, report a, the, I mean, they recommended the approval of the master transportation plan, so I'll just pass that on. They made a mo- a positive recommendation, and they studied the external dwelling unit code development quite extensively again. We've been meeting on the water recharge plans regularly. We met this morning, in fact, again, but, uh, so that's moving forward. I don't know if Dan has something to, to add to that, but, uh, they're going to solidify the, the, uh, diversion and the site and so forth. I think they pretty much got the routes solidified, so, uh, I'm trying to think any other, but I, uh, there, I did too attend that last night. Contrary to what Councilman Dean says, I didn't come in the first company, but Brigham Young signed my yearbook, so, anyway... But I do have an issue with the quilt walk. They portrayed that those, I mean, I know that history, they, they came over with the quilts, they were starving, made it to Parwin. But Parwin didn't just say, you're welcome, you're on your own, and goodbye. They, and they enacted that, that they walked back on quilts, and they didn't. Parwin took care of them, got their sup- their supplies and took them back in wagons and, and so forth with all their supplies. They didn't send them back with the supplies walking on quilts. So, they need to kind of adjust that a little bit, 'cause they didn't, they represented, it took like two weeks or something, and it was, i- i- it, that was a little bit distorted, so, anyway. 'Cause Parwin does not do that. So, um, I'm trying to think anything else. I think that's all that I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. You instead of me, because I think you'll cover what I'm gonna cover faster. (laugh)
Um, I don't know if I will or not. I'm, I don't have any, uh, uh, notes written down. I was gonna talk about the school, um, crossings, we did, we already talked about that. Um, um, w- on the diversion, Dave mentioned the diversion, Councilman Burton mentioned the diversion, that project, we're meeting, we're gonna be meeting with the gas company and with a geotechnical consultant. We're finalizing the routes, um, and we're getting close enough to the fact that we're gonna have, within the next couple of weeks, a cost estimate, and we'll know exactly how much short we are. We di- we talked today a little bit about our plans to approach, um, uh, water optimization, um, we have a local member on the board, um, k- uh, Spencer Jones in Enoch. Um, we're hoping to have him hopefully give us a positive recommendation to go after some money. And, um, Alpha Engineering said that that actually is probably the best source of funding to, to round out the end of the funding. It may be part loan, part grant, or whatever, we'll see what they can give us, um, so that's part of that. We, we have met with UDOT, um, they're probably gonna make us bore underneath one forty-three, but they may help us, um, with some costs on that, so we're gonna apply, they s- they're gonna maybe split the costs with us on that, so we're hoping that's the case. Um, thi- this is just a big, big project, so it's good to see it still moving. It's very complex and it involves a lot of different entities, and we just, we're just moving on it. Um, we've talked about pickleball, um, bridge, we're still moving forward on all of that. I don't know, I'm a little bit brain dead. I don't... Bike park, um, we have that all, um, moving. Unfortunately, it's happened to take a little bit of a backseat, 'cause we've, um, you know, such a time crunch on getting the pickleball stuff. Um, if you notice, the city crews have done a lot of work to that site to get it ready to, to have the concrete guys come in. And, um, some of the, th- the material that we're taking out of that site, we're moving over, that we'll use to build the, the base of the bike park. And, um, if you're listening, I doubt they are, but if you're listening, hunters, we need our bid back for the fence to go around the bike park. We've been pestering them for a bid, and, um, working on the shade structure is part of, we're gonna do, we're g- probably from the same company, we're gonna get a shade structure for the pickleball and for the bike park from the same company. So, we're just rolling forward on that, um, a lot of internal stuff, we're trying to get figured out, and I don't have anything else unless, what, what was it that you were wanting me to cover?
I think you, I'm, just wanted to not have to do all of it, but I think you covered most of it. And also, I told David Harris I thought we'd be out by eight thirty, and it's a good thing I'm not a betting man, 'cause I said if I was a betting man, I would've lost. Um, but the only two little things, um, just working on all of the stuff, and it's like, a lot of things are moving, and if you ever want updates, public or council, I mean, if we're... Communication is so critical, but it's also time consuming. It isn't, you know, anything more than, we're not really sure, you know, a lot of the time, the best way to communicate to the most people. I've recently had a person in the community say that every time the power goes out, we need to just post on parwin.org, oh, the power's out again, here's the update, so that we're a little more proactive. I think we need to try to figure out how to address that maybe proactively instead of reactively. We've been talking about that a little bit, too, in, in different meetings. Um, two tiny, tiny things, I sent it to the council, but I'll tell the public as well. Um, the Five Mile will be open for reservations on August third. I, uh, contacted Mike Worthy and he got that date back to me, and then I sent it out to everyone. And, and you can go on Iron County's website and reserve Five Mile, which I think is very exciting, and people, well, have been anticipating it. I thought it was gonna be earlier in the summer, but August third's right around the corner, so that's great. My guess is it's gonna book up fast.
Hey, and while you're talking Five Mile, um, Alma Adams was on the council, on the county commission. Al- Alma's the reason why that's open. He insisted, he pushed, it was not in the county's interest financially to do it, and he insisted and pushed. And it was involved the federal government to get it done, it involved a lot, and Maria and Mike Worthy have done a lot of work, but it's because Alma insisted and represented Parwin well, so I just needed to give Alma a shout out for that.
Shout out to Alma, for sure. Um, the other thing is we did extend the deadline on fundraising brick. We, we are allowed to extend deadlines. I mean, we put a, a deadline out there, but we decided to include the Iron County Fair, um, run a few ads and things like that. And so, the new deadline will be September eighth, which is the end of fair week, basically. It's, um, gives people time to learn about the project, see the changes that have happened since last year and buy a brick. Um, and that has good momentum right now. The sales have been good and everyone's excited, and just wanted to let you know, if anyone mentions buying a brick, they have until September eighth. And that is all I have. Callie? Scott?
No, just, uh, continue to call or text if you have questions. I appreciate, uh, everybody. Um, I was talking to somebody, y- especially you, Callie, with all these meetings and all these minutes, and you send me multiple attachments. And it's, it makes me tired just opening all the attachments, um...
We see Callie, we're like, ugh.
But, uh, nothing to report, but just, uh, uh, an observation. Uh, I told someone this, just this past week, any one of these projects that you're dealing with, a transportation plan, that's a big deal. There's a lot of work that goes into that. Um, then you add onto that two annexations and, you know, the projects that you, I don't, I hope Dan doesn't fall over dead, um...
A bridge, an airport, um, a huge water recharge project.
The, I, I mean, I, I had a long list. All ki- you're even remodeling this five thousand year old church, and we haven't even gotten to the flagpole, David, but we're working on that, right? Um, there's just so many things that you're dealing with, power issues, and so I, I just commend you. I think it's public service at its best, and what America's about. It's your hard job you're doing and, and not full-time jobs, so, for most of you. So, anyway, that's just my observation.
Thank you. The year of everything all at once, right?
Man.
Right.
Yeah.
(laugh)
And if the planning commission meeting should go a little longer, I think we could get more done there. Uh, sometimes we're done before ten PM, and I'm like, I'm just getting warmed up, but, um, anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I just, I just wanna ask for my handouts back.
Oh, yeah, oh.
I'm picking them up after.
Mayor, I have one more thing. Um, on three hundred East, right in front of the pool, we are doing that project, that's a city project to extend that curb and gutter. Um, that has never been r- finished. We were getting water that was washing into the pool area and on the new, um, deck and all that. So, we hired a contractor to actually pour the concrete, but we did all the prep work and all that stuff, so, just to...
And that went in today.
And that went in today, and I know that the public is kinda probably wondering what's going on, but the concrete got poured today.
Thank you for bringing that up. So, with, uh, different things going on, I had John ask Aldo again, how he said his name, and...
Yeah.
He said, is it Aldo or Aldo?
Aldo.
And I said, how I remember it is he's all that, he's Aldo.
Aldo.
And now I never forget it's Aldo, so, he's getting a lot done, and that project getting poured today was really exciting, so really ex- it, it was a lot.
Can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Really quick. Um, you know how we've been talking about that sidewalk down Holyoke?
Mm-hmm.
Are we...
Six hundred and eighty feet.
Are we, what are we doing? Is it, are we kinda at a standstill at the moment, or... Someone asked me and I was like, yeah...
No, it's a great question.
So, we have some survey data, um, we need to, w- we need to design that. There was some question as to who was gonna design it. We were gonna ask the person that we have the survey, and they said it's a UDOT road, they did not feel comfortable with the design. And I'm not sure if th- those that wanna help fund that are willing to hire a, an engineer to design it. Um, 'cause it, it has to be designed so that we have the slope correct and the elevations, everything correct, so when the rest of the improvements go in, it's consistent with that. We did look, and it, it isn't gonna have a, um, a problem with the sewer, so, um, it, it just needs to be, we just need to have another follow-up meeting on it, and then make sure we get some commitments from... If people are gonna fund it themselves, then we can move forward on it.
That's it, no, it's a great question, because that day I said, Dan, where are we on the survey?
And I never answered.
Because we noticed the manhole was out, you know, not in the way, the light posts aren't in the way, we have the property owners all in agreement, we have the people that have said they'll help pay for it and do the work in agreement. And so, really, it's just the engineering side, which the engineering side just always kills us all off. Um, but we've gotta get, have that engineered, 'cause it's UDOT road, we can't just throw a sidewalk in.
Well, and that's basically what I told this resident, because they're like, well, you guys are doing all that stuff over at, um...
The pool.
The pool and that park right there, but this project came first.
Is about safety, yeah.
And it came first. They were like, that was on the burner first, and I was like, it's...
We're not doing sidewalk at the pool either.
No.
Just curb.
Just curb.
But I just...
I didn't fix that.
I'm better.
But I was like, it's UDOT and it's a diff- it's just a different ballgame.
It is.
That way, so, and they were like, oh, okay. Like, they were fine, but then I just told them that I would...
Do we have need for a closed session tonight? I haven't heard anything from the council on that, and so with that, I would entertain the final motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes. (laugh) You were fast.
Thank you, DJ, for staying so late. That was later than I thought it would be. (laugh)
Thank you. Thank you. No, no, I'll, I'll make it, and they let me out. I tried to move the sheriff's meeting to Fridays, but I got outvoted, so... What's that? No, I'm not their boss. They're all elected sheriffs. I told them, I'm their director, I'm their boss, and they said, oh, really? They could threaten to quit, but then they might say, okay.